Brewster's trying to call in, but he didn't write down the meeting ID.
There's Tim.
He's not here.
Yeah.
Show it up pretty sure.
Yeah.
That's good. Meeting ID is eight two zero seven. Seven eight five.
Yeah. I'll have to get it to Brewster.
Zero eight eight one. Zero eight eight one. Read it back to me.
I'll have my voice.
Eight two zero. Correct.
Yeah, I just want to tell her she's on the phone right now.
Yes.
Let me send it to you. Everybody on the phone, want to have anyone?
Yes, we do.
No.
No. No calling you.
All right.
All right. So that's the ID of passcode is four zero 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 four one. Correct. Yes, sir. Yes. Okay.
Yep.
I'm going to go front. Okay. Bye. Brewster's working on it. Okay. So at this time, six oh two, I will call to order the public hearing as noticed. Public hearing on the proposed grant donation from the Jeff and Dorothy Byrne Foundation pursuant to RSA one ninety-eight colon twenty dash B to the Mascoma Valley Regional School District. In the amount of five thousand dollars for the Title One Math Morning, the hearing begins at six PM to be immediately followed by the school board meeting. At this time, if you are a member of the public participating via Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand. Icon on the Zoom feature and we will then recognize you and unmute you so that you are able to speak. Are there any public comments at this time?
On the screen.
On the screen. Nothing. Thank you. I will therefore close the hearing at six oh three. At this time, I will call the school board meeting to order. So call to order at six oh three. And I would ask that you all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now read the statement for those attending via Zoom from the board. As a representative of the Mascoma School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number twelve, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. The physical location of this meeting is the Mascoma Valley Regional High School Library. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing additional public access to the meeting by telephone and Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting via the meeting notice. Instructions have been provided on the website of the Mascoma Valley Regional School District. Public comment times have been established on the agenda for members of the public to participate in the meeting. I will ask anyone wishing to make a comment to raise their hand in the Zoom webinar controls by clicking the hand icon. Members of the public participa- participating by phone can hit star nine to raise their hand. I will be notified if a hand has been raised and will call on the members of the public one at a time to speak. You will be prompted to unmute yourself and while unmuted, your name will be displayed on the screen. You may click raise hand in the webinar controls to lower it if needed. At this time, for those of board members participating via Zoom, I would ask that you state your reason while I do call your name. Tim Josephson.
Hi, I am Tim Josephson. I am in Canaan and I am participating remotely due to the COVID emergency order.
Thank you, Tim. Isabel.
Hi, I'm here because of COVID. I'm in Enfield. I'm in my room. I'm good.
Thank you, Isabel. Brewster, go. You're gonna have to hit star nine.
You can tell him you can change his role to be the panelist.
Not on our phone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes, his hand raised. Working on it. Okay. And that's him doing it himself. See how that works out.
If you hover over his name, can you unmute him for him?
No, it just says I can't manually unmute. I have to ask them to unmute themselves.
This is Darsix, I think.
You did it.
Here we go. I'm sorry. I'm out of the area and not able to attend because of COVID nineteen, but I'm not in the area to be able to attend in person because of COVID nineteen and not in the area of attending in person.
Thank you, Brewster. Hope Stragnell.
I am unable to attend due to reasons for COVID nineteen. I'm at my home in Canaan and I am alone.
Thank you, Hope. Candace Frye.
Candace Frye. I'm attending from my home in Enfield due to COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Candace. Who did I miss? That's it? Great. Good job, Amanda. At this time, I will take nominations for the role of Chair for the Mascoma School Board.
I will nominate Cookie Hebert. She is so fun.
Okay, that's a nomination for Cookie Hebert, seconded by Kathleen Stacey. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I close the nomination process. I would ask all board members to vote. I will do a roll call vote. In favor of Cookie. Let's start with you, Tim Josephson.
Aye.
Brewster, go.
You're muted, Brewster.
I'm gonna skip ahead while Brewster continues to work. Candace Frye.
Aye.
Hope Stragnell.
You bet. Aye.
Kathleen Stacey.
Aye.
Danielle Thompson.
Aye.
Cookie Hebert.
Outstanding.
Extension. Brewster.
Not sure if he's able to.
There you go.
Cookie Hebert, I vote for Cookie Hebert.
Thank you, Brewster.
He can't have another phone.
Are there? Did I miss anyone?
No.
No? Everyone's accounted for. Cookie Hebert, I now pronounce you Chair of the Mascoma Valley Regional School Board and hereby turn the meeting over to you. Thank you for the beginning of year seventeen. Thank you. All right, next we are on the agenda will be the nominations for Vice Chair. And I'll open it up to nominations.
Danielle. I'm nominating Tim Josephson.
And I'm second.
Okay. Tim Josephson and Danielle Thompson and Kathleen Stacey. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All right, seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Brewster, go. You're good, Brewster. You lost them.
It's still here. Now I think he's unmuted.
Well, we'll move on. Tim Josephson.
Yes, aye.
Kathleen Stacey.
Aye.
Candace Frye.
Aye.
Hope Stragnell.
Aye.
Danielle Thompson.
Aye.
Cookie Hebert, aye. And Brewster, go.
Well, there he is. Hello?
And so. I told you to come to you earlier. I left a message with.
Let him know the whole board can hear him. The whole board can hear you, Brewster. Do you vote for Tim for Vice Chair? The whole board can hear you. Do you vote for Tim for Vice Chair?
What's that?
All right, I'll let them know you're busy.
I can't, I can't do this.
I know, it's awful. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right.
Have a good day. All right, we'll talk to you later. Bye. Okay.
He tried.
He tried. Yes, he did. Okay, seeing that there's no one else to call upon, that'll be six votes in the affirmative for Tim Josephson for Vice Chair. Thank you. Next up is the Board Secretary. Do I have any nominations for the Board Secretary position?
Anybody willing? Is anybody, would anybody like to do it? It's not much to it.
I'd like to nominate Danielle Thompson.
I'll second it.
All right. Any other nominations for Board Secretary? Batten the door down. Seeing none, roll call vote. Tim Josephson.
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey.
Aye.
Candace Frye.
Aye.
Hope Stragnell.
Aye.
Hebert, yes, and Danielle Thompson abstaining. All right, so we have five in the affirmative and one extension. All of us in, yeah, we just went through that. So you are now Board Secretary. Thank you, Danielle.
Congratulations.
All right, at this time, do we have any public comment? No. Okay, moving on. Okay, so tonight we have a couple of presentations. High school information is a surprise learning and in-person learning planning process, spring sports, and for IRS, we have spring sports. And we also have a discussion of non-school sponsored sports travel teams. So Cookie, just before we begin, I did ask Mr. Fitzgerald to prepare a plan. As many people know, there's a movement to get kids back in school. And that includes high school kids. So high school kids that were either remote or maybe on a hybrid model. Or there's a push to get those kids back into school and back into a five-day learning. Multiple reasons for that, social reasons, mental health reasons. So I did ask Mr. Fitzgerald to prepare a couple or three plans tonight to present to the board. We've been looking for the way the board would like to go if they would like us to open high school. As you know. Our pre-K through eight or K through eight grades are fully in school and we are able to maintain a six-foot distance in those classes. With the change, we felt that this may be a good time to start to examine this change because of the change in the seating requirements, the social distancing requirements and the contact tracing requirements. And because of the strong uptick in the number of adults and eighteen-year-olds that would be vaccinated. So we did think that this would be time to maybe look to see as other districts are moving this way, it would be an appropriate time to look to see if it was the desire of the board to move our high school into five days a week for in-person learning. Also, looking at the synchronous piece of this, making sure that we hit those kids that would remain fully remote. And how we could include them in the class on a day-to-day basis. So Mr. Fitzgerald will present that to you. Then we do have the spring sports. I've asked Mr. Brown and Mr. Thompson to keep those very vague, right? Where I'm not worried so much about the bubbles anymore for spring sports. We're back outside where, you know, very socially distanced, especially in sports like baseball and softball. So looking at what the big picture would look like, and I've asked both ADs to make sure it's all inclusive. I don't want the kids to have to worry that every two weeks, sports are going to be pulled away from them. So we're looking at creating a very inclusive piece of looking for permission for you all, whether or not we would move on or allow for spring sports. And then Cookie, I will let you speak a little more to the discussion about the non-school sponsored travel, sports traveling when we get there. Okay?
Sure.
So we'll start with Mr. Fitzgerald, if you don't mind.
Kamel, if you wouldn't mind putting up my document, please.
Getting it right now.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. I'll start with a little state of the state so you know exactly where we are at this point. Currently, we're in the AB format every other day. Excuse me. That's about one hundred and forty-two students per day. And right now, give or take, we're at about sixty-two students that are remote. Looking at the next two and a half-ish, three months, I think there are a couple, three options that we could entertain. The first option would be to stay in the model we're in. Like I said, that allows us to have the one hundred and forty-two students a day, allows us to keep our class numbers low, maintain social distancing, keep traffic in the hallways, restrooms, cafeteria at a minimum. We have managed, excuse me, with few disruptions really, pretty remarkable to maintain in-person instruction on a regular basis. And while we are nowhere near where we'd be in a normal school year, we do feel like we've done a good job limiting the damage in the deficits and they're not anywhere near as dire as we had anticipated. So status one would be to maintain where we are and to channel my best Tony Fauci, not spike the ball on the five-yard line. A second option would be, because I couldn't come up with a better name today, would be the hybrid hybrid model. And I think I shared a different document with, with Kamel and I have, so excuse me for not having that up. But the hybrid hybrid would be an option where perhaps we bring just the seniors back for the last month of the year. Part of the issue with that is when you start to look at some of the mixed classes. For instance, some of our high-level math classes are mixed juniors and seniors. Some of the science classes, even a class like clothing and textiles, advanced woods. That gets a little messy and having everyday instruction when all of the kids are not there and. You know, right now, we don't have a memorandum of understanding that lets our teachers teach synchronously. And we have some concerns about whether or not we have all of the technology to pull that off and be able to get it in the timeline we have. The third option is the return to full instruction, which is kind of a heavy lift at this time of year. That would be two hundred and eighty-four students in the building. My understanding of the relaxation of the six-foot distancing to three feet applies to students who are in cohorts. And our AD days do not. Fit the definition of cohorts because, as I've said, every seventy-three minutes, we reshuffle the decks and our kids move from class to class. They are not with the same group of kids all day long. So that's one concern. Class sizes. Right now, we do not have enough room to accommodate classes that are larger than twenty-two students, really. We have twelve classes with more than twenty-two students in each of them and seven of which are over twenty-four. And I have an AP stats of class of twenty-seven. So that's a pretty difficult place to find people, although there are workarounds. I could take the gym and turn the gym into two classrooms and then prevail on Mr. Suddy to find me the technology to do that. But it is possible if we had to. Lunch is an issue. Right now, we are squeezing and I do highlight squeezing twenty-six tables for social distancing in the cafeteria. And we have three students at a table. That, that backs us out at seventy-eight students per lunch. I could add a third lunch for the last month of the school year, but that still increases my lunch periods to ninety-four. That's fifteen more students. That's a pretty heavy lift. We could move them into the cafeteria. I mean, into the gym for lunch as well. So it is possible, but in reality, if, you know, I know one of the dates that's been bannered around is March third because by then all the teachers will have their fourteen-day window from their second vaccination. We only gain fifteen in-person days for freshmen, sophomores and juniors and only twelve days for seniors. So. As tired as everyone is and as, as fatigued as they are and as well as our kids have done. My recommendation to you would be to stay the course. I think we are working on some activities that will allow the class of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to get together so they have that closure. But, well, that's my recommendation, but that's the best information I can give you at this point as to what our viable options are.
Okay. Questions for Tom?
Okay, Tim, go.
I had a quick, I had a quick question. Thank you, Tom, for putting this together. I know it's been a lot of work and you guys have been doing really a lot to try to do this. It's not easy. I guess my, my main thing is we do own a tent, right? Like, didn't, didn't, wasn't that something that the class bought last year?
Yes, we do have a twenty by forty-foot tent, right?
Okay. I mean, I'm not suggesting that you use it, but like for, for classes, but it is something we could consider. if we just wanted to put that up somewhere, and you can use that for class of twenty-one events. You know, you could have a couple of them under there, stuff like that, so.
That is certainly to plan, Tim, where I have a meeting on Friday with both the junior and senior classes to figure out what or if or how a prom could take place, because that's a big deal right now. We're talking about what we're going to do for senior week in terms of parade, bonfire, because that still hasn't happened. So again, just like last year, we want to provide them as close to a normal closure to their senior year as possible. So all that stuff is, we're spending a lot of time on that right now.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I am wondering, is there any way we can get surety on this cohort issue? You know, whether the, or are we sure on that? And then the other one I was curious about, you know, in terms of, I mean, a lot of the biggest reason for having the kids back would be, I would think, mental health issues. Can Tom, you know, can you maybe address that a little bit?
So clearly, everyone is struggling. You know, when I think of where we are with, you know, fifteen-to-eighteen-year-olds who have not been in school for the past year, I think it would be great if we were having this conversation in January and we're talking about all of second semester, I would have a different opinion for sure. But asking them to come back once the weather's getting nice and they haven't been in school full-time, that was one of the, one of the issues we worried about last year, even coming back in May. It's like, are they really, why do I have to be here? I could be doing this from my deck at home. If anything, I think the idea of bringing the class of twenty-twenty-one in is intriguing. I have not had that conversation with anyone other than Amanda, and I had about a five-minute conversation about that. I would be interested to see what the class of twenty-twenty-one thought and whether or not the teachers that are impacted by having mixed classes think that that's a viable option.
Okay. Any other questions, Daphne?
So when you said that you recommend staying the course, how would that apply to like the senior activities that are in the process of being planned?
So they are tentatively slated to start June 8th, and we would just have them all come in because most of their stuff takes place outdoors. For instance, if we are, you know, we always plan on doing graduation outdoors, so rehearsal would be outdoors. If we're doing the bonfire, not to get too deeply into the weeds for this, but one of the things you're talking about is the bonfire and the parade on that Thursday, so they would spend all day Thursday building it outdoors, or Wednesday, we'd have to look at the weather. So them being on campus together really doesn't impact anybody else. And like I said, we would only be increasing the load on campus by forty-ish students anyway. So that's not a major impact.
Yeah. Daniel?
So I have, I have thoughts on things, but what I'd really like to do is to hear from Isabel, kind of that student perspective. Sorry to put you on the spot now. And also, I know that there are some, some parents that are, that are here with us tonight, and I think this is one of those types of conversations that should have some feedback before there's any sort of decision that we make.
Alright, great.
Do you want me to go now? My on-spot now?
Sorry, Isabel.
No, you're fine. I think that as we're coming closer and closer to June 11th, we have less than three months. I'm not counting, I promise. But kind of not being able to see like any of like, I'm on A-Day. So not being able to see, like, my best friend is on B-Day. So I haven't been able to see her like at school or a lot of my other friends that are on like the other side of the alphabet. So I don't necessarily get to see them. So that's always tough. And coming from someone that does like struggle with like mental health issues and stuff like that, I do think that being able to be in school at least twice a week, honestly, it gives people kind of a routine and some sense of like normality. So I think that even if we were to bring the senior class back, it might not be like the most like, I guess, like efficient way, but it'd still be giving us that time with our class where we'd have been imagining. I've been thinking about this day since fifth grade. Like, my senior year, I've been excited for forever. And it hasn't been anything that I thought it was. So I think that if we were to, at least if like we did our senior activities outside and like being able to be with everyone, that would definitely be exciting. I think anything to do when, even if not everyone in our class gets along, it's still, we're seeing each other. And we haven't seen each other since the orientation in August or September, whenever it was. And so I think having that on there, then being all together right before graduation, so we see each other, everyone, I think, three times because we had to take the SATs. But I think that if we even get to like see each other, even if it's for like a week, it's still better than nothing. Friends that don't necessarily get to see each other. And some of us don't necessarily have our licenses either still. And so we might not be able to see our friends, and school's the only way we get to see them. And so I feel like if, like, I have a friend that, I have a bunch of friends that are in our cohort, and I never get to see them, one, because of COVID, and then two, because I don't go to school with them. So we're restricting that, and so if we don't, if we kind of like take that a little bit away, it, I feel like it would make a lot of us happy in a way. And so I feel like that's kind of, I think that what we're doing now for everything and like the seniors and all that, everything is perfectly fine. Like, we're doing great, but I think if like, there's, what, May 3rd, there's twelve cohort days left or whatever, I feel like even if those like twelve cohort days, it's not a lot. I feel like even if that, we got twelve days, I feel like that would be exciting, to say the least.
Isabel, can I just ask you, what would be your first preference of the three models that Mr. Fitzgerald put out? Everybody back, just the seniors back, stay the course. What would be your preference?
They're vastly different.
Yes.
I guess also, I feel like everyone back would be ideal because that'd be the closest we've been to everyone being in the school in over a year. So I feel like that would be very exciting, but at the same time, I do understand that we're still in a pandemic. But as people are getting vaccinated and some of like the students can get vaccinated, if they work at the hospital, if they work like at a grocery store, some of my friends work in a daycare and they have the option for that, and parents are getting vaccinated, I feel like that's also helping with, if we were to go full-time, maybe like some way have an option, like for like the older, like the senior class maybe, to like see if there's like a vaccination and like a way that we can get around it and get it. I know that can't be easy, but like if there's like some like wiggle room there, like the hybrid, it's, I was exposed last week, so I've been hybrid all week. I don't know how the remote students do it. It's like, you're just sitting and watching. There's like, they do like a good job of like, like incorporating people, but it's kind of hard when environmental science, you're planting. I can't plant from my room. So there's like different like science classes, as Mr. Fitzgerald was saying, or like math classes. Those aren't easy to take online. So I also understand the hybrid, what we're at now, and then seniors, that would be amazing. But I understand that we also have, like, would there be a way for like the juniors, since there's only like eighty-four of us, right? Something like that? Like, the juniors to come in like once a week for like their classes that like, they have, like with like the mixed classes with like the science and math? I feel like that could be something that, that could happen. I don't know. I don't mind any of the options, I guess.
Thank you, Isabel.
Of course.
And any further? So I guess my question is, are you looking for us to make a decision tonight? Or are we going to take a reflect on this and kind of wait for another two weeks? How soon are we looking to bring students back fully? Whether it be the entire school, seniors, or whatever we decide?
I think Cookie, a safe way to do that would, to be, two weeks after the second vaccination for teachers would mean that our teachers would be fully vaccinated. So that shouldn't cause any concern or issue for the teachers. As far as I know, I'll have to check with Mr. Fitzgerald about where he had his cohort three-foot information because the HAN thirty-eight that I've looked at just says three feet. So I'll check with you, Mr. Fitzgerald, on that specific information, and I know Hope had addressed that. But we will look into that. You know, we do have April break coming up, a couple of weeks. So we would probably need a decision, especially if it was in the flavor of the board, to go everybody back full-on because that would be quite a bit of work for Mr. Fitzgerald. He would need to start to look at what classes could teach where at what times. So that would be a challenge. I didn't know if you wanted to listen to other members of the public. It's certainly the prerogative of the board to have public comment at this time. I know I lumped a lot of things into this presentation, but it might be appropriate, Cookie, to see if there are any members of the public that would like to speak.
Do we have a hard copy of the plan from Tom?
We do not have a hard copy, but I think Kamala can reshare it to the screen.
Well, I was just trying to, because I, you know, I'd like to browse through it as I'm trying to take in everything.
I can certainly share it with the board members.
Okay, that'd be great. So at this time, if there's no other board members that have any other comments right now, I will open it up to the public. So they have to raise their hand, correct?
Then you can be up there.
Okay. I have no idea what they say, so.
Oh, Jessica Longley.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Hi, guys. This is Jessica Longley. I would like to see everybody go back full-time. I do understand that it is a lot of work. I'm wondering, is there a survey that might be able to be sent out, asking parents for their preference? If we were to go back full-time, whether the parents would choose to send their child to school? I feel like there may be some parents that would opt to have their child stay home, which would take away from some of those numbers going back full-time.
Okay. We can have that as part of the discussion, I think. Yes.
It's a good point.
It is a good point. And who else do we have up there?
It's Dr. Boofay.
Hello. I'm sorry, a little late getting here, and I, for some reason, don't have picture, video availability. But even though I personally am conservative and a little hesitant about the recommendations, the CDC recommendations following, there we go. Is that better?
Yeah, great.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm late getting into the meeting and getting this video in mute sorted out. The, although I'm personally a little hesitant about the progression to the CDC's recommendation for three feet up between students if the rooms are adequately ventilated. And that's by, what they mean by that is a three times an hour exchange, full exchange of the air in a room. And everybody consistently using masks with the adults in the classroom being six feet apart. I think you have to go where the scientific recommendations are. After spring break, with enough time to make sure that there's not an outbreak, as Amanda's outlined, may, if we're going to do it, a reasonable sense with the teachers being vaccinated, everybody's still going to be nervous about it, you know? I mean, when we get our second vaccine, we'll still be nervous. But it's something that, at some point, we need to prioritize education for, better education for the, for the students if we possibly can. And I think, as was presented here by our student representative, it certainly has a lot of advantages. On the other hand, the, you know, the guidelines will need to be, continue to be followed with regarding masking and the decreased distance. I think we've done a pretty good job of that. The numbers in our schools have been small. The recent several students and the quarantine of contacts resulting in quite a number of people being, students being out possibly related to the wrestling, King of the Mat event in Hampton, certainly, I think, is worthwhile of our awareness, as is the the outbreaks that occurred in Hanover and New London, college-related, which have been substantial. So we have to be, this is not a free ride. This is cautious step if we decide to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boofay. And do I have anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Is that Ashley Cole, Henry?
Yeah.
Ashley, you are muted. No, she's not?
So from a teacher's standpoint, I have some concerns. None of my classes are large, so I'm not concerned about fitting my kids in the room. No, not right now, go away. My concern would be that what if something happens and we are leading up to AP exams, graduation, prom, all of those things, and magically, they're all gone because we came back to school for two weeks or three weeks and something happened? That would be my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay. So this is Micah Drexler. Caleb Drexler is my son. He's a senior this year. Isaiah is a sophomore. I mean, I understand the concern about going full-time back to school. I mean, I do understand that like Lebanon and Hanover have been, I mean, Hanover's been full-time, all their schools full-time since the beginning. I assume that may be a cohort thing. I'm not sure exactly. And I know that they don't have, they haven't had Maybe more than like two cases. As a result of that, so they've been very successful and they're full time in person. And I know they have at least ninety percent of their kids in the school district going to school in person. So I'm a I'm a very strong advocate for. For in-person learning. I know for my son Caleb, for his mental health of, you know, seeing friends and being a part of. His senior year would be really important to him. I understand the concern of of COVID and the possibility of of things happening. But and I I'm a barber actually, and there's no six foot distancing in my barber shop. And there's no not have been a results of any sort of cases in that too with mask wearing. So I understand mask wearing is is crucial, more than six foot distancing, I think. But some, you know, and I I understand too, like the teachers have been doing an incredible job. With the. With what they've been given. But you know, our kids are are essentially getting like kind of half an education this whole year. And I know my son Caleb, who's going to college next year, is very unprepared for. The amount of schooling he's going to be doing next year because he's only going to school part time. And I know some of the other schools like Lebanon with their. Their hybrid model is actually a true hybrid model where they're actually going to school in person. And then when they're at home, they actually are in school. And a lot of our kids are, I know both of my boys, when they're not at school, they're kind of sitting around not doing much. So we don't really like that either. We want them to get a full education. And I believe that the only way that they can do that is if they actually go to school full time. So. I mean, that's kind of where we stand. I know Kara's with me on that too, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Any other public comments? Anything else from the board?
So I think that I it's interesting to hear the different perspectives. And you know, if there's anyone else in the that's attending tonight that hasn't, of course, the raised hand and wants to. And wants to pipe in. I I know that I would appreciate any additional feedback if you have that. I think the idea of having a. Having a survey that goes out to high school parents to ask for for feedback. You know, one of the things that that I think that we have done done really well through the pandemic is to reaffirm the role of families making decisions that are best for them. And I would like to continue to offer that as an op, you know, as an option, as an opportunity. I don't know that any that there would be families that that maybe would decide that they would rather. If we're moving in the direction of having everyone in person that would say, ah, I'll just go remote for the last bit of it. Because they've had a taste of what it's like to be remote. Maybe they felt like that would be a better option for them. I would like to give parents, if we have that opportunity, I would like to, I would like them to make those those decisions and for us to figure out ways to make it. And I also agree that. Having having kids in school in person for five days. There's a reason that that's kind of the way school is. Because having those opportunities for conversations, for digging deep into learning, to exploring with your peers. As opposed to an isolation, even if you are together on a Google Meet or Zoom or whatever we're all using for technology. You know, there's just something different about being able to do things in person versus virtually. It's been a great way to stay connected when other other options just weren't viable. But I think that if there is a way to get kids into the classroom and try to really end on a on a high note. I think there are likely to be lots of parents, maybe not kids, because remember these are teenagers. And the don't overlook the ability of perhaps pressing this news button. Clicking the clicking the survey so that you are recorded as attending. And then getting back to your Z's for the rest of the day. Sorry to my boys who maybe call not happy. Thanks for calling you out. I hope they're watching. But you you know, and one other thing is would bringing students back either every either everyone in person? Or at least the seniors for perhaps the last month? Would that be a good trial run to see what are the protocols that we need to implement? We need in place to come back for next year? Would that give us a chance to see how the spacing, the traffic flow, lunches, et cetera, et cetera? Would it give us a chance to see some of that in action? Because I think one of the things that we've learned also through this this pandemic is that there's a lot of things that we never thought that we would have to deal with. As educators, as parents, as administrators, as a community. And it was kind of an exercise. You know, we can write out the plans, we can write things out on paper, but there are just some things that you don't know until you put those plans into action to see where the hiccups are. And so that's my other thought is would this be an opportunity not only to end the the school year on a high note, hopefully? But also to see where some of those things, some of the things that we would want to continue to do next fall. As we bring everyone back and and have that be be something that that also could be a goal. So those are some of the things that I've been thinking about. And I I I do think that the that for both the academic and the social emotional. Reasons, there's a there's a lot of, there's a lot of compelling factors. For looking at going back to in person. But I would like to have that 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 feedback from from parents and also from from the faculty and the staff here. You know, I'm sure that they have had conversations with Mr. Fitzgerald and 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 hopefully they'll continue to do so. There are some, there are some things related to their agreement for this year that I that I think would have to be also discussed. You know, we want to, we want to think about, you know, making sure, especially now that the the weather is nicer, having the windows open. What can we do with getting some more outdoor opportunities for education, those sorts of things? And and perhaps that would allow for. Receiving that idea a little bit more.
Thank you. Do I have another hand raise? Is it Ashley Cole? Ashley?
Amanda, did you hear anything from Megan or Diane?
Have I had any feedback from Megan or Diane regarding having kids come back?
Correct. I know we in our last union meeting, we talked about it and a bunch of concerns were brought up. And I I don't have it in front of me, so I can't pull them up.
Um, I think the concerns were brought up by Diane, if I remember the conversation with Megan correctly. Was concerns, there were concerns that are valid, like space wise, will there be a solid plan, right? That was, that was the major concern is will the teachers be kind of thrown to the wolves or hope to have a solid plan? And I've assured Megan that we've done this at three out of the four schools. We know what a solid plan looks like. I have all the faith in the world that Mr. Fitzgerald would put together a solid plan for teachers. And make sure that we're able to adhere to that three feet, if not more of distance for kids. So those were the concerns that I heard from Megan. But I think if we do send out a survey, as Danielle has stated, as Jessica said, I think that is a very good idea. Because we may find that there are enough parents that are going to choose a synchronous method of learning. So that that's what we had right at the K through eight, right? We had enough kids, we siphoned off about twenty-four percent of the student body at first. And we were able to adequately distance because of that. So I think that is a very valid request by the board and by the parents for that survey to go out.
So initially, how? So the questions on the survey, would they be coming from Tom, from you, from?
I could work with Tom, right, and create a survey basically around, you know, what parents are comfortable with. I I think what I I think the flavor that I'm starting to hear from parents, from the parent comments and the input, is that. They are looking for more of an educational experience for their kids. So I think maybe it would be looking around, would you be willing to send your child back to school if it were five days a week in person learning? That type of deal.
When does it open up again for the remote kids to be coming back?
Oh, let's see, we are welcoming the remote kids back on April nineteenth, I believe. That is the day right after April break.
Right.
There's a turn in the quarter was just a day before break. So we just asked that parents not, you know, break, the third quarter will still start before April break, but it's only a day or two. So we're going to bring the remote kids back in after April break.
Pretty close to what we initially had felt for bringing the high school back.
Yes, and I think the valid point that Dr. Bouffet brought up of a two-week quarantine puts, you know, enough time. So if people do go away on April break, even though there's no longer a travel quarantine, it still would help mitigate any spread if someone brought something from somewhere else.
Okay.
I mean, I would be willing to put in some work with Mr. Fitzgerald. There's Tim with a hand up to move forward with the survey. We could talk about it again at the next board meeting on the sixth.
Is that too much to ask to have the results of that survey by then? I mean, can we get this out, you know, in a timely fashion? Yeah, I think it's on a Monday, close to Friday, whatever.
Can we use School Messenger to alert?
How else would we do it, Tim?
Push people to our brand new website.
Yeah, right. Absolutely.
I just want to make sure if anyone else from the public wanted to speak before I said anything else, that's all.
Oh, there's more.
This is good. Who do we have?
Hi, guys. It's Jessica again. Um, I just wanted to bring up also if we don't have the correct number of students that would be willing to go remote. Maybe having the possibility of the seniors and the juniors. And if there's any other students that attend the Hartford program. I know from a parent perspective, having to get our children there in the middle of the day on cohort days that they're working remotely. Was very time consuming. And it took a lot from my employer and myself in order to get our students there. So I think that if we could at least carve those groups out. To have them in school all the time, it would help with the whole back and forth of, you know, the students having to find the transportation to get to school when they're not there. That's all.
Thank you, Jess. Diane Adams. Diane, are you there?
Uh, I'm here now. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So in addition to what may.
Lost you, Diane.
Oh, sorry.
The bandwidth, that's all. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we were, a few other concerns I heard were about whether or not more parents would put their students out remote. If in fact, everybody came back because of concerns. The percentages that we're hearing about the new variants that are out and how stronger they are and and more dangerous they are were of concern. And also just, I know I have a class of twenty-four. If I had all twenty-four, I could not be three feet apart in my classroom. And so those are some other concerns that teachers are having within the building. And I just wanted to share those.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Hi, Allison.
All right, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, so I have kept my twins home for remote for this entire year so far. I'm not overly thrilled with sending them back because honestly, COVID terrifies me. And I'm a nurse at the hospital and I've dealt with the COVID patients and it terrifies me. One of my twins would be high risk of severe complications if she got it. My question is. If everyone goes back and if the three feet isn't doable in classrooms, what do you do? And what about the buses? There'd be more students on buses? And how would you manage three feet distance or six feet distance on the buses? I'm just, I'm I'm honestly, I'm terrified of this, so.
So Allison, just let me tell you, you would not be forced to send your kids back.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to relieve you there that we would still have our remote option, absolutely. We would not be forcing anyone that was uncomfortable to come to put their kids back in school full time, okay?
Okay, I mean, I know it's, I know being in school is like the best case scenario. But the kids who are sixteen and above are going to be able to get their vaccines soon. As I've said right along, as soon as my kids can get the vaccine, I'll send them back in a heartbeat. But until then, it terrifies me. I don't even want to fathom what would happen to her if if she got it, the fevers and there's, I don't, it wouldn't go well.
Yep, you don't worry, we're not going to force anyone back.
Okay. So even if if they, how, what would happen with the buses? Would the buses be able to, do you have enough drivers? Do you have, would you be able to accommodate all the extra kids if they were coming back?
Yep, we would work on a plan. And it's really high school kids and we're finding that a lot of those are able to drive. So we would really work on a plan to make sure that we had enough transportation for those that needed it.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Jessica? Jessica?
I didn't know my hand was raised again. I didn't have anything to say this time.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, would you touch our board?
Touch the board.
Anywhere. Keep it on. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so right now we're looking at the survey, which Amanda will coordinate with Tom. And we have two, the three options that we have, get parent feedback, get feedback compiled and bring back to our next coordinated in two weeks. Is that the plan at this moment?
Yeah, I can do that, okay?
I do have a quick, just a just a quick comment. I appreciate the, I really enjoy the parents and enjoy it. But I mean, I I appreciate the parents' feedback and all that. And and just to let Alice know, my daughters have also been remote this whole year. One's a high schooler and one's a middle schooler, so I totally understand your concerns. I have immunocompromised people in my family as well. That being said, I appreciate the work that the high school, you know, staff and everyone's been doing to have those kids be remote. And I'm glad we're allowing that flexibility because it really is just a little bit more. You know, I think if a plan can come up with, if we can come up with a plan that that can that can keep some distance. You know, keep the windows open in the classrooms, get more fans to just kind of air through. You know, I know Rados, you know, work really well on stuff like that. You know, set up the tent in the parking lot and everybody parks low, you know? I mean, there's there's some options we can do like that. But my main, my main concern is like, we don't, we haven't had school outbreaks. And any cases that we've had in our school buildings have been, you know, from community, like kids bring it from home or kids bring it from where else. So my main concern is that that kids will bring it in. So my main concern is that, that kids will bring it in, our teachers and our staff and our, everyone will be fine because they're, they'll be vaccinated. However, the kids might spread it amongst each other and bring it to their own house, you know, so that is my only concern. You know, but, but I think if we keep distance, and I think if juniors and seniors and and Hartford kids, I think that's a valid uh, thing, if we can explore that option, that, that to me would be a really good one, but I like the survey, I like um, you know, finding out what, what we can do, but I think it would also have to come with a concerted effort of like, we are on the five-yard line. We can almost get there, let's stay masked up, let's, you know, kind of like a push as well to like really reinforce in our community. Um, you know, the importance of of how close we are and we're almost there. Um, so that, that's all I really wanted to say, so.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Okay. Well, uh, I think we have a plan in place for this right now, so we'll move on to the next subject, which will be the spring sports. Uh, Rodney, you with us?
I am here. Yep. All right. Uh, Kamala, if you could pu- put up my presentation.
Rodney, you can put up your presentation if you would like.
Hmm, let me see if I can find it, give me one second.
This is going to be first.
Let's see, I got it right here. Um, I hope, let me see, give me one second, guys. I like that I can do this, this is good, all right. All right, here we go, we should be rock and rolling right now, let me go here. All right, bring that up. Share screen. It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
By me stakes.
Kamala runs a tight ship.
Yes, she does. We're maybe in charge. Will it let you announce?
Let's see, yep, let's see here. Great. All right, so again, want to thank everybody for taking the time. Uh, again, spring sports, uh, we're here, uh, pretty exciting. You know, my windows are open here at the house, you know, just seeing, you know, kids getting outside, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting there. Uh, did look at the forecast and see that there is a chance of some snow at the end of the weekend, so let's hope it's no- nothing that it can accumulate. Um, as we get started here, um, I just kind of a quick where we are. Uh, you know, sports update, um, we have now successfully completed a fall sports season and a winter sports season. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald and I like to say that um, they were both very uneventful when it comes to COVID. So again, I commend everybody involved to get us this far. I'm very excited again to get to the spring um, and the sports season, which starts on the twenty-ninth. Again, I can't thank my sports team, my administrators, um, you know, Seth Marot, he helped us out in a pinch um, many times uh, this winter when um, our Granite State Sports couldn't livestream. Uh, we were able to livestream uh, through our district YouTube page, so that was awesome. And uh, many families said that uh, that um, that stream was, you know, really uh, competed with a lot of the uh, and was much better than a lot of our competing in our schools that we went to, so. Um, hats off to Seth and everybody that made the winter sports season safe and successful. As I've said, um, you know, we've had optional workouts start, uh, we're in our second week. We have been outside, which has been great. Um, all of our kids are masked and um, social distancing and following all the considerations uh, that I have shared with you. Uh, there is a proposal that I shared with you as well as NFHS and NHIAA um, considerations that actually just came out yesterday for baseball and softball. Uh, it, it outlines what we can and can't do, uh, very similar to a lot of things that you'll see there, very similar to things that we did in other sports. Uh, I really look at what we did in the fall and really plan to say, all right, we're going to do, that was a very successful plan. We're going to do things very similar to that when it comes to our, our spring sports. Uh, when it comes to, again, things just to kind of remind people is that, you know, when it comes to safety trainings, I've done that with all my coaches, anybody that's involved. Um, there is a free COVID uh, certification that my, all my coaches have been through. Uh, you know, when it comes to compliance safety officers, uh, the spring coaches are like, well, who's the compliance officer? I'm like, well, you, look in a mirror, you, everybody does their part. So when it comes to the screening and tracking and everything that we need to do, everybody does their part. Uh, again, I, I say many times, you know, throughout the, the, the school year, everybody has, you know, went around and done their, their fair share of reminding people to get their mask over their nose and and do whatever they can to again mitigate this virus and allow our kids to enjoy the sports they love. Face coverings, tracking, mitigation me- measures, all are things that are outlined in those proposals uh, and the considerations. And I will touch base a little bit more on that as we move forward here. Uh, kind of feel like a broken record, but we're going to continue to educate and reinforce every day. You know, we do have plenty of hand sanitizer, uh, the disinfectant gun that um, the, the fogger there that uh, Carrato uh, gave us this winter was amazing, it helped us clean the uh, the basketballs very quickly. And that's something that we are definitely going to use when it comes to cleaning bases, throwing implements, baseball, softballs, you name it, so that is definitely something we are going to do. Face coverings, face coverings with the language that the NFHS and NHIA especially has said is that they are suggested that we wear them, we will wear them, uh, rest sure we're going to wear those. And we're, and we're, in, it actually says in the language too, in the NFHS, NHIA's considerations that I shared, that state tournaments are going to require them, they just haven't voted yet. So we're going to wear them, our schools around us have already said they're going to wear them. The umpires and officials are saying they won't come to schools if people are not wearing masks, so we're going to wear masks. Every, you know, any activity we do, we're going to wear masks. Again, we, the um, you know, the schedule is regionalized. Um, you know, we do have, you know, the schedule of, of the teams that we are going to see. Again, I'm still working on the schedule, uh, spring schedules definitely, you know, those things, but these are the the teams that we will see, schools we will see in softball, track and field. And uh, in baseball. Uh, again, we're going to go with the, the open tournament again. When it comes to um, our kind of the, the regionalized thing that we did where there are, you know, some clusters for the first two rounds, very similar to soccer, field hockey and basketball. And the state championships, we're actually waiting to get a, a plan on that. Uh, what they are um, saying right now, and that's why the track considerations aren't in there is because the committee hasn't met yet. But their, their plan is to have it, and it sounds like it, it'll potentially be at Guilford High School or a Division Three school. And each day, it'll be a gender, so let's say it will be Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, the boys will have their, their competition. And then on Wednesday, the girls will. And they've already said that there won't be any fans. So that's another thing to, track and field, being a former track and field coach myself, big numbers, that's one of the ways that they're going to limit those things as well. Um, as we've said too as well, you know, I, you know, the, the biggest thing is, is that like, as Amanda said, we want to make sure that we are very transparent and say that, you know, we want approval now, so that every two weeks we're not coming back and saying, well, can we do the tournament? Like, we want to get that permission that we can move forward with the spring sports season as the NHIA tells us, you know, that things are going to be. Um, you know, state championships, it's not going to be an open tournament, there will be state qualifying standards, so it's not going to be a free-for-all at that state tournament. And again, transportation, schools have been great when it comes to, you know, my requests for, you know, no fans in the winter. Or if we need to push, you know, push a game a little bit um, further um, into the afternoon because of bus limitations, so uh, again, a lot of the same things that you're going to see. And uh, the proposal I did send out definitely breaks down each thing, spo- like, just a couple examples. Softball and baseball, they can't spit, they can't chew gum, they can't spit so- you know, sunflower seeds. Are, the defensive team is going to bring their own game balls to each, to each venue, so if it's a home or an away game, we supply the clean baseballs, so when we go out defensively, we will provide the ball, pretty similar to what, what football does. You know, you use your own equipment, you use your own's um, ball for when that happens. Again, uh, that stuff has been shared with you, the sports considerations. Um, our spectators, again, that will vary district to district. From what the consensus is, is it's going to be very similar to what happened in the fall. Um, a lot of our local schools will have some limitations. Ours will be very similar to the fall where we're going to recommend immediate family members only and have masks required. Now, we'll have signage up like we did in the fall and, you know, we'll, we'll reinforce and educate and make sure everybody is masked up when they do come to Masoma. Um, again, we're transitioning, my, hopefully they were trending in the right direction here where we're going from indoor activities. You know, there are a couple week, uh, times next week where it's pretty close to freezing. So, you know, our teams will be inside, but we are definitely pushing towards being outside. And I've told my teams, you know, we, we live in New England, so uh, let's dress like we're going, you know, so we can always take the layers off if we need to, so plan accordingly and um, our field turf um, crew, I've spoke to, spoke to them today and we're hoping that we're able to get on that, that field as early as next week, late next week, so. Uh, fingers crossed. Uh, and again, as that people have said, even with the, the previous um, presentation, the social emotional ben- benefit has been huge for the fall. And, you know, this, in the, in the winter, and you got to think too, this is the spring. We weren't able to have a spring sports season, so not just the athletes are really excited, our coaches are too, so. Um, they're very excited to get going and really, you know, work with the kids and you know, the early numbers are, are, are great, kids are coming out, kids are excited to do what they need to do to play the sport, so. Uh, very excited, you know, and uh, really looking forward to some nice warm weather and uh, you know, getting outside. Any questions, comments?
One from the board?
I just had a quick, quick question. Um, are you trying, you're, are you going to try and schedule like softball and football? Softball and baseball on opposite days for home games so they're not playing at the same time?
We are, the way it works, um, the, that, that similar model where varsity baseball and varsity softball are going to play at the same time. Looking at figures and everything, there looks like it, it'll probably be just varsity sports this year for those two programs. Hoping we can get some more kids, you know, coming out, but as of right now, it looks like we'll have enough for one team for each.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yep. Hope.
Um, I, I guess, I, I think, once again, we know you guys are doing a great job. Um, but I'm looking at the consideration for players, cloth facial coverings are permitted, and I think before it said are recommended. I'm just curious why we just can't say are required. Um, and I would feel so much more comfortable saying, go for it, you know, um. And I, I understand that you plan on doing that, but I also, yeah, I guess I'm just, that's where I just part a little bit of company and just feel uncomfortable voting for something that doesn't say you have to wear them.
Well, this is, yes.
I realize, you're probably trying to line up with what the other language is, but once again, I'm just curious why we just can't say it.
Well, I got the information at like five PM yesterday, like, so I've been kind of holding off because the stuff that, the, the one that has the proposal, that was actually information that was sent out like when COVID all started, like with, with the considerations, those were federation rules. And we were actually waiting for the NHIA to give their considerations. There's nothing that's been sent out or anything yet to our, you know, our, our families, our community about what we are doing. Uh, now that I have that information, we are going to require them.
So that would change in the to required? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, I also think it's a whole lot easier for the coaches, I feel bad for them, I don't think they need to police anything and, you know, um, it's just cut and dry and simple, and especially if we're considering this other, you know, opening up the school, we just, there is no wiggle room here in my mind, so that's good, thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, do we have any? Will it be problematic for the, for track and field to be wearing masks?
So, that, there has been a little bit, I had, I had an athletic directors meeting today and uh, the considerations have not come out, they're still waiting on guidance on what masks are going to look like. Um, a lot of the things are like if a kid is pole vaulting or high jumping or anything like that, if the mask, you know, coming over the face and it being an hazard. I'm still waiting to see what that's going to look like when it comes to it, but again, we, again, we're just, what it was just being saying, I really don't want any wiggle room, I, you'd really like it just to be, you know, we're going to wear masks and it sounds like, you know, the schools are all on board with that.
Anyone else from the board? At this time, I will open it up with public comment. Dan Kylie?
One thing, Rodney, I'm, I like football. Baseball, you probably get thirty-five spectators. You think you could open it up to people who can prove that they've been vaccinated?
Well, we're, you know, and that's, that's that thing where, you know, if we're vaccinated or not, you know, I always say like optics-wise, you know, we are still, and that'll be a discussion that I have with Amanda and Tom, my principal, on, you know, what we do, but I'm pretty firm on that, if we were a mask, we were a mask, when I'm fully vaccinated, I'm going to have a mask on still.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the mask, Rodney, my problem is saying you can't have spectators who aren't immediate family.
Yeah, we, we can suggest it, you know, like I suggested just an immediate family, but you know, so, we still have student, students from the school come down and watch their friends play, so we're not going to say, hey, you can't be here, like, we don't, are, we're not like Lebanon where it's a gated um, athletic facility, it's very hard to police that, so if people come, you know, I, myself and whomever else is there, um, you know, we'll just remind people to social distance and make sure that they're wearing masks.
Anyone else from the public? We can't see.
Why would we require masks?
Can you state your name for the record so we can have?
My name is Dylan James, Raffin, and I'm curious as to why would we require masks for people who are vaccinated or, you know, people are vaccinated?
I can answer, yes. One, one reason would be that when the virus mutates into another form of virus, the vaccine that you currently receive isn't necessarily going to protect you. And viruses mutate all the time.
And the reason that we require them here within the buildings, and I think that's why Seth is bringing you a mask, because it's one of the rules inside the building that you came in through the doors and you must wear a mask in, in this building, so. Okay, I'll let, I'll let Mrs. Bell take it, take that into consideration and uh, I know that for the, for our deliberative session, we had a separate, we had a separate area for people who had exemptions. Um, because there's lots of people who are not comfortable with having masks with people around, but the public health side of things is that even if you have a vaccine, that doesn't mean that you that you are automatically safe from everything and that there's still, uh, the, the science is still out as far as whether or not someone who is vaccinated will be able to uh, to spread that along to other people who are vaccinated or not. And the efficacy of all of the vaccines, none of them are one hundred percent. So even though the, even if you're vaccinated, the risk of you having death or severe illness is tremendously lower. You might still have mild to moderate illness and you might be able, you might be passing that along to other family members or community members. So that's the, kind of the public health in a, in a nutshell, why you would still want to wear a mask. Uh, we might not want to, but that's why mask-wearing is still the public health guidance that's um, that, that we're adhering to and would appreciate.
Can you elaborate on how the masks are effective at stopping the spread of COVID?
Well, I don't think we do for the public discussion on that, I think what I'm trying Well, I don't think we do for the public discussion on that. I think what I'm trying to get the point across is this building is a mask up, mask on building. We require our staff, our custodians, our students, anyone that comes in the building must wear a mask. And I would appreciate if you would comply with that. And if you feel you can't, then I will ask you to leave because you're not, you're making a lot of number of people in this room very uncomfortable with not having a mask. I guess if you came in with a medical documentation and so, so I mean, I don't know.
Well, we would, we would say that you could zone join by zoom.
Right. So I mean, you guys are all like more than six feet away from me. You guys are wearing masks. They're effective, but I don't understand why that would be a concern.
Six feet away and wear masks.
Right. Just well, are for me. So not quite sure.
I think point of order, it's just, this is not the discussion that is, that is meant for the, for the presentation. So I appreciate that. I know that if you, I think you asked your question pertaining to mask wearing at athletic activities. And I think this, this board and this, this administration has made the decision that the entire facility grounds and building are, are places where masks are required. And that's the, that's the, that's the rule, you know, and because that is, you know, that that's just what's best for the, the community at this point of time. And so we've tried to make, you know, additional accessibility through the technology. We've done that for sports as well by live streaming games, even outdoor games. And we'll probably do that. I'm not sure about all of them, but for at least some of them for baseball and softball. We don't do that for track and field because we don't host any home, home meets, but I do think that there will probably be some some live streaming. So we try to, we try to make accommodations for folks that either have medical exemptions or have other sorts of issues that they take with, with the mask wearing rules within, within the school community. But you know, I, I think that it is, I know I feel more comfortable, I'm vaccinated. I'm still wearing my mask. I'm still spreading out and I feel most comfortable in situations where others are doing the same. So I appreciate you, you, you being here and hearing that out.
Seth, you can leave the mask on the, on the chair. We'll, hopefully the general will put it on. Okay, sorry about that Rodney. Do we have any other members of the public? Cause I cannot see the screen. So
I do.
Oh, Dr. Bouffet, go ahead.
First of all, I couldn't have made a better public health con, comment than was addressed. And just the, the fact that the masks are primarily for those around us rather than for our own protection. So thank you for whoever made that comment. It was great. Rodney, I had expressed concerns about indoor sports. And I am very pleased to hear that you're going ahead with the requirement for masks for our teams in the spring sports. You sound like you've made, as, as has the organization's very careful consideration and approach to how to safely, as safely as possible carry out the spring sports, which I think will be lower risk because they're outside. And I appreciate all the efforts that you've been, been through and, and I'm personally very glad that we're considering outdoor spring sports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bouffet. Anyone else? Dana?
Last thing that I want to mention is that I, I agree with Dan. I think that having spectators at outdoor games, I think that we probably do not need to have the immediate family members only as a requirement. There's not a ton of people that come to watch softball and baseball to begin with, and I don't want to be turning away someone's grandparent that wants to see them because you know, they weren't able to watch any baseball last, last year. And there's, there's enough room along the sidelines for, for folks to be able to spread out. So I think that if we could make sure that people know that they're, that they're welcome at those events. I know that there's lots of people in the community that would, would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
To, to piggyback on that, that is what kind of what I was asking if you're playing both softball and baseball at the same time, if you could have spectators in the outfield. But I think, I think if you encourage people to like, you know, sit on the hillside or, you know, just spread out, I, I think it should be fine for spectators. And I know Dan really wants to go to a baseball game. So I, I see what you're doing, Dan.
We'll definitely set up the bleachers so that there's a home and a, and a visiting section as well too. And I'll make sure that's communicated out to teams.
As long as there's distancing, masks and, and separation, I see no problems with outside spectators in, in modest numbers.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dan.
I mean, prior to COVID Rodney, there might've been fifty people at a baseball game.
I'm hoping Coach Isom can rally the troops. So
And a lot of it has to do with, because it's three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon. People are still working.
Yeah, right. And for, for folks who haven't, haven't seen the fields, of course, when we put in the new softball field, the softball and the baseball fields kind of touch each other. So you wouldn't really be having people like around the run fence or anything. That's just, that's, that's not a place that's amenable to spectators. So yeah, I don't think we'd get anyone like in between the two.
Okay. Any other questions for Rodney? Okay. Thank you, sir. Have a good season.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Now we have Todd for IRS.
Todd Thompson.
Hi, everybody. So I'll, I'll keep this short and sweet. Rodney does a great job explaining all our guidelines and our NHIA networking and stuff like that. So here at IRS, everything's going to be followed.
I'll, I'll be the one to interrupt you to say that you're cutting in and out.
Yeah.
Can you get closer to your microphone?
How about now?
We can see you.
Yeah. So at IRS, things are going to happen just like they are at high school with the guidelines and the protocols and everything like that. Because last year, we really didn't get into more than a couple of days of signups for sports. Really didn't know what we were going to get into this year. Because if you really think of it, our now eighth graders were seventh graders. Our teams are only made up of seventh and eighth grader. So I had no clue what we were going to have for softball and baseball this year. And we also, this year, track and field is now a middle school, school sport instead of a club sport. And that lasts out on
Hey.
Play a sprint sport. So so yeah. As far as COVID requirements, like I go, four of my five coaches will already have, I guess we can start putting this on resume stuff, coaching during COVID special, specialty. So they are all very aware of what needs to be done as a coach during COVID sport. Other than that, I really have no concerns in, in, in the season. After tonight, our next plan will be to start getting the coaches together, start thinking about some vacation nights and hoping and praying that the weather will let us get outside as soon as possible. So with the April vacation around there, definitely be up and running at least in some capacity when we get back from break.
Appreciate it, Todd.
And I would also like to say kind of on a side note that I know coaches in our school district were very appreciative to be included with the vaccine clinic that went on. Sometimes our coaches might be a little bit over overlooked when it comes to some of the stuff that, that, that we do for them. And I, I know for the end of two, two coaches that were very appreciative of that, we included them as well.
That's great. Great. That was, that happened. Yeah. So any other questions for Todd? Todd, sorry.
Do we think that Vermont is still going to be not playing against us? And will that impact your season?
We're lucky with baseball and softball that like if Hanover or Dresden baseball, what they're called and stuff. They, they're, they're an organization for just baseball. So they always have more multiple teams. So I, it'll be nice. It won't be like basketball season where middle schools are deciding we're, we're not going to have sports at all. It's almost going to be the difference where these schools are going to have multiple teams of the same sport. So I, I think we're going to have probably just about the, at this point, a, a schedule just like it would be on a normal spring sport. And not, and that's not bringing in Vermont into consideration at all. But I know Vermont would love to come over and play some New Hampshire teams, but that is still to be determined. They are not, New Hampshire and Vermont middle schools are not scheduling together right now.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Anyone have any comment or any question? Okay. I see none. The next discussion we have is of the non-school sponsored sports travel teams. And I guess I had asked Amanda to put this on the agenda in regards to the recent outbreak that we had because of a non-school sponsored sport. And I, I guess I have to just kind of get this out here. I guess I found it to be a little discouraging after we went back to try to get everyone a season. And, you know, going elsewhere after the fact, you know, and putting players and students and faculty at risk, which is what we've been trying to avoid by making sure there was a season for anyone who was requesting it throughout the whole school year. So I guess my, my question to the board is, I mean, hopefully we don't have to deal with COVID, you know, for the rest of our lives. But at this point in time, I would like to make sure that the parents understand over the summer, you know, even with COVID out there, you've got to be careful. I mean, we can't be having the kids go out to these meets or games or whatever and bringing anything back. Like I said, I just feel like I was, I was a little disappointed in the, the parents would allow, like we have basketball going on now. There's a lot of a lot of close stuff going on, you know, AAU and is it Wizards? I mean, I don't know all the fancy names, but you know, it's a big concern, you know, and I know they're going to be coming into April vacation for the break. You're going to have a lot more tournaments and stuff to go to then. So I would just like to make a plea to the parents, like understand where we're coming from. We're trying to keep the Masoma community safe for all our kids and our staff. Don't go risking something to, you know, play a couple of games of basketball. I'm sorry, I just you can take it for what it's worth, but I didn't know if the board would have any other conversations in regards to this.
I'm not sure. I understand the activity was outside the school function.
Yes.
So that's difficult to monitor.
Exactly.
By this board anyways.
Exactly. But I think knowing that we went, you know, above and beyond to try to have every sport, sport barely have a season.
Yes.
And the staff going above and beyond and all the other school districts that we had participated in with the sports program.
It's great. Yeah.
So the concern was, you know, they went and came back and they were part of a cluster that was recognized and you know, unfortunately, you know, we had a case. So it's just, I, I I just, I just wanted to express my frustration that I was, that the board is trying to do the right thing to make sure everyone has what they need. Sports is a big part of a lot of our kids' lives.
Yes.
And whether they're remote or in school, they can still participate. And I think that's very helpful for a lot of the families out there. But I, I guess I just felt, you know, a little offended by, you know, not complying with what we're trying to do and putting the school community, you know, at a risk. So
One of the most positive reinforcement reminders that we have is down on our electronic bulletin board where it says masked up, protect your community or something to that effect. And I, I like that type of reminder that, you know, it's, it's still important, you know, wash your hands and do all the things that you're supposed to do. And then, you know, we'll get through this sooner.
Absolutely. I just, I just wish that we could, you know, protect everybody where we can. So just be driving school kids around all day long, you know, it's so it was a challenge, but they, they keep their mask on. I'll tell you, the worst ones that I have, and I have to say, sorry guys, with the high school. But I have no issue. It's like a part of their face. They don't even mess with them or nothing, you know, so.
I think it's, you know, it is difficult to like we, we can't, we, we can't be monitoring or you know, keeping track of everyone who goes, that's playing on a travel team, that's part of a a drama troupe that's going to church or work or out on college visits and like there's, there's just a lot that we are having get togethers with their, with extended family. Like there's, there's just lots of stuff that we can't possibly be monitoring all the time. And the, I think the, the best thing that we can do is, again, we have to leave the, leave a lot of this in the hands of, of our students and our families so that they're making the right choices. Again, the right choices for them, but making sure that if they that for all the activities that they're doing inside or outside of their home, the school or the classroom, you know, that they are adhering to the best possible guidance, you know, and so if they're on a travel team and they're using mask and they're, they've got their own ball and they're doing all those things, then you know, we, we've got some track records with, with those sorts of things that are working. And it's, it's really tough when you're talking about you know, and my experience has been with the, the sports scene is that it's without doing some of these programs, you're not, you're not getting the, the exposure, you're not getting the experience and you're not getting the opportunity to get better. Cause a lot of them don't go to, you know, can't go to camps during the summer or whatever. And so these are the times where they're getting better and they're having a chance to to, to do other things. And so I'm glad that we're not saying that that's not going to be an option, because I don't think that we would be able to tell people that it wasn't an option. And that would, that would leave a lot of bad blood that I don't think that we would, what we would want to get into. But, but again, just reinforcing the fact that if, if, you know, whatever activities that you're participating in, that you're really doing it with an open, open, with an open mind and and, and clear on the, on the guidance that's out there to keep everyone, your, your family as well as the community safe.
And there's so many outlets out over there. If you have a question, you can call and ask. I mean, if you think, okay, we might have possibly are exposed, what we need to do. You know, those kinds of things. But I, I was just, it was just a level of frustration to where I just felt, you know, I just want them to understand where we stand. We're trying to get everyone we can, you know, to accommodate in regards to normalcy, however you want to call it, but I would just be, just be a little cautious and we're not over the, over the bed yet. So but I appreciate it. Tim?
Yeah, I thank you Cookie for putting this in there because you're nicer than what I was saying when I first found out why we had a case. Yeah, frankly, I, I found it really disappointing. Because we as a board have had multiple discussions and Rodney has done so much work and Todd has done so much work to, to make our sports safe. And, and we have given athletics everything that they've asked for. We've given them every season they've asked for. We've given, you know, we, it's not the same, but they've been able to play and all, all the sports, we didn't cut anything. You know, every time there's a rumor that, that something might change with athletics, people come out and they, because they support people come out and they, because they support it and I know that. And, you know, and we went to bat for them. And I feel, you know, personally a little upset that, you know, I, I, I sat out here in a meeting, you know, several weeks ago saying like, let's make it so like maybe our parents can see a wrestler, you know, and, and then they go to a tournament with no masks, you know, and they're wrestling with no masks. So it, and that's, I mean, that's what I read on the news. And so it's, it's frustrating that we say protect our community and yet our community's not protecting itself. Um, so I would just maybe, maybe hope that we can send something, you know, some, some sort of, do we have some sort of agreement, um, that like student athletes sign? Because I know they can't, they, they can't play at the same time they play a varsity sport. Is there something that we can do? Just saying like, if you are gonna do this, um, you know, please let us know, please take precautions, just sort of some sort of reminders as they go into the spring season. Um, just saying we're not out of the woods yet. If you wanna do this, fine, but you have to take the precautions that, you know, that, that are necessary. Um, you know, because, because it, it seems to be that, that it, it, it was out there and it came back to us, you know, despite all the, you know, uh, good intentions and all that. And, and I understand, I, I, I get, you know, wanting to have athletics and it's important. It definitely is. But, I mean, it goes both ways, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to do a lot and I, and I would, I would hope that the, you know, community can, can do their part as well. And so it was very frustrating because, because like I said, Rodney and Todd did so much work in this and, and to have a case like that, um, is really disappointing. And, you know, maybe, you know, if, if they are, is a big tournament or something, that those kids can go remote for two weeks. You know, that, that is an option. So it's not like the kid, you know, can't do these things. You know, i- if this, if kids wanted to go to a wrestling tournament, that's fine. If they had said, look, I was at this wrestling tournament, we were exposed, we were all very close, I'm gonna quarantine for two weeks and go remote. Um, you know, that, that should be the option. And I, and I worry that parents aren't necessarily doing that, so. And then it comes back and spreads in our community and, and gets people sick that that shouldn't be. And so, um, but thank you, that, that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Can you hear me?
Doctor Baffey, yes.
Apparently the raising hand is not working. Um, I thank you for bringing this up Cookie and, and, and thank you, Tim, for, uh, y- your comments. Um, a few meetings ago, I had raised the question about, um, those, uh, students that do engage in, uh, in traveling teams, consider, uh, a self-quarantine and, and remote, uh, learning. I know it's not necessarily popular, but, you know, I have, I can't go visit my grandchildren without quarantining, uh, still. And, uh, hopefully that'll resolve sooner as the vaccine keeps in, kicks in. But, um, it's, uh, uh, it, it's something that would have to be voluntary, um, but a strong statement, um, from, um, the board and from, um, the athletic department, um, would, uh, would I think go a long way to say, you know, this is, this is not something trivial. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Baffey. Do we have anyone else? Okay. Is there any other public comment on any of the discussion that we've just had? I don't see anyone, Kimberly, do you?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have some new business tonight.
Cookie, before we get into new business, I realized that I need to read the board indemnification because we are newly organized.
Oh, do you have a copy with you?
I do have a copy.
Why it's so far down the agenda?
Um, it should be up before we do any other business, really.
Okay, correct, Tim. Yes.
I didn't wanna take any other votes on anything. All right. So, uh, in accordance with RSA, chapter thirty-one, section thirty-one, colon, one oh five, uh, liability for damages limited indemnification and insurance. A city, town, county, village, district or precinct, school district, chartered public school, school administrative unit or any other municipal corporation or political subdivision made by a vote of the governing body indemnify and save harmless for loss or damage occurring after said vote. Any person employed by it and any member or officer of its governing board, administrative staff or agencies, including but not limited to selectmen, school board members, chartered public school trustees, city councilors and aldermen, county and city managers, regional planning commissions, town and city health officers, overseers of public welfare and superintendents of school from personal financial loss and expense, including reasonable legal fees and costs, if any arising out of any claim, demand, suit or judgment by reason of negligence or other act resulting in accidental injury to a person or accidental damage or to or destruction of property if the indemnified person at the time of the accident resulting in the injury, damage or destruction was acting in the scope of employment or office. I present that to the board, uh, for consideration.
Do I have a second? Second, Danielle Thompson for the second discussion? Any questions? See you done? See you none with the roll call vote. Tim Josephson?
Yes.
Hope strike now.
Yes.
Candace Frye?
Yes.
Kathleen Stacy?
Yes.
Danielle Thompson?
Yes.
And Cookie Hebert, yes. Passes unanimously, six zero zero. Thank you for that, Tim. Okay, moving on to the board member ethics and also receipt, uh, of the board member ethics policy. So any of you that are remote, um, if they stop by the office and, and sign it and, uh, give it to Martha, that would be great. Okay, so this is policy B C A.
I think Cookie might be good if it was read aloud.
Sure.
If Tim doesn't mind reading it.
Nope. Tim, you have that? Where'd he go? Tim? He's just reading.
I can hear, sorry. Sorry. Got three screens going. All right, this is board policy, uh, B C A of the Mascolma Valley Regional School District. In order to fulfill its duty under state law to provide education for pupils within the district, the Mascolma Valley Regional School Board adopts the following expectations for each of its members. As a member of the school board and in accordance with my oath of office, I will strive to improve public education by striving to adhere, uh, to the following expectations. One, attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning issues to be considered at those meetings. Two, understand that the board as governing body does not manage the district but rather sets the broad goals and standards for the district by way of policies adopted by a quorum of the board at proper meetings under the right to know law. Three, be informed about current educational issues by individual study and through thorough information, uh, such as those sponsored by my state and national school board associations. Four, make decisions and take votes based upon the available facts, the full deliberation of the board and my independent judgment and refuse to surrender or subordinate the judgment to any individual or special interest group. Five, work respectfully with other board members by encouraging the free expression of differing opinions and ideas. Six, seeks opportunities for the board to establish systematic communication channels with students, staff and members of the community. Seven, recognize that a general principle, that as a general principle, the district and its students benefit when a board decisions which have been made following consideration of all sides and vote of a quorum receive the subsequent support of the whole board whenever practical, practicable. Eight, respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law, applicable law or is received in confidence or non-public session. Nine, recognize that individual board members are without authority to act relative to school district business and that I may not individually commit the board to any action except as specifically designated to do so by board action. Ten, understand the chain of command and refer problems or complaints to the proper administrative office per applicable to school board policies. Eleven, work with the other board members to establish effective board policies and foster a relationship with the district administration toward the effective implementation of those policies and the management of district operations, personnel and facilities. Twelve, communicate to the superintendent and to the board only as consistent with the right to know law, expressions of public reaction to board programs, policies and other board actions. Thirteen, present personal criticisms concerning district operations, staff, et cetera, to the superintendent, not to district staff, the public or unnecessarily at a board meeting. Fourteen, establish policies and protocols for systematic communications with students, staff and members of the community. Support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff and assist on a regular impartial evaluation of all staff.
Do I have a second? Second, thank you, Daniel. Discussion. And Candace, this is an awful lot, um, so if you have any questions, we rattle off because we've been doing this so many years, but, um, do you have any questions for us at this time?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So like I said, if you, um, the remote members and then include Rooster, which I will give him a call, and let him know that he needs to sign and turn this in, so. Okay, um, anything else for the board? See you now, roll call vote, Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Hope strike now.
Aye.
You describe?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
And Cookie Hebert, aye. Passes six zero zero. In our packet, we have the voting results from March ninth. I would just like to say thank you for everyone for coming out to vote and, um, I believe, I think Amanda brought it to my attention, this has been the first time in years that, uh, all the towns passed everything for us, so it was much appreciated.
Do the towns receive the official tally at some point?
The towns send us the official tally.
Okay, that's interesting because there was an email that was sent to people in Orange from the secretary of the slot board and it had, it had total misinformation on whether or not the budget passed.
The school board budget?
Yeah. And I'd already seen it in the Valley News and when Jay came home from one of his committee meetings, he said to me, oh my gosh, your budget didn't pass. And I said, yeah. That's not right. So I, I wonder, you know, how do, how do they get off on the wrong track so easily? Because.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm pretty sure.
Bad idea to just collect them all and then send them all back out. I don't know. Best practices for the future, I guess.
I'm, I'm going to, see, they meet the same time we meet, so they're kinda like banned me from coming in and having this discussion with the slot man. And, you know, my, my own husband is on the budget committee and he put it on a conflicting night too, so I couldn't even go with and question budget items. So I'm like, oh, I'll threaten them and I'll tell them, I'm not gonna be your representative if you don't start listening to me. I just, I can't stand it when people have to get out there and send the wrong information out.
Yeah.
It just, it's one of those things that gets under my skin, you know, either don't send anything at all or.
Right.
Make sure you're right when you send it.
Well, um, yeah, so anyone else have any? Again, thank you to the Mascolma community for supporting us schools. All right, so there's a couple of things, the right to know information, and then you want any? In our packet? Is there anything in particular you wanted to point out or is it just for informational purposes for us?
Uh, this is for informational purposes and just so that the board is aware that, uh, certainly emails may be subject to right to know. It also is the guiding principles around our non-public sessions.
Which brings us to the non-public sessions policy B E C. Anyone has any questions or comments on that? It looks like we have just revised this in two thousand seventeen. And the next policy, which is the B D B, uh, board officers and description of the chairman, vice chair and secretary, and that was recently recoded in twenty twenty, January twenty twenty. Any other comments or questions on that? Advisory committees to the board, which is basically some committees, correct? Policy hasn't been looked at since two thousand fourteen, so I don't know. If there is any need to bring it back to committee, because it would be seven years since we've looked at it.
Um, Cookie, I will say there was another New Hampshire School Board Association legal update, so we have another five or six to go and then it is the intention of the S A U office to go through the, uh, letter B policies. So section B, uh, would be where we would head next, um, in anticipation of the spring legal updates.
Okay.
So, uh, we're chunking away as quickly as we possibly can.
Gotcha. I appreciate you. Um, except we have approval of the MS twenty-two corporations as voting.
Yep, so the MS twenty-two is in your board packet. Um, we'll need all of your signatures, so those of you that are remote, I'll leave it in the entryway for you to stop by and sign it. Just, um, allocates all, 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 all of the budget by function, which is basically department.
Yeah, one hit the screen. You're slacking.
I'm sorry, I got tired of looking at Josephson.
You love it.
Only I could shut myself off, right?
So this is the full budget. Um, the total also includes, um, the other warrant articles that were voted on, so that's the total. So I just need, um, motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve that, and that's twenty-two.
A second.
All right, any questions on this before we vote? Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Hope strike now.
Aye.
And just fry?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
And Cookie Hebert, aye. Six zero zero, and it passes. We can sign that whenever you want us, the ones that are here. All right, we have in your packet a proposal from Amanda for teacher appreciation. And it looks like we're making some pins again?
Well, I have two options for the board. Um, we did find some really cute pins you can see that highlighted in yellow, so it wouldn't be exact, it would be the shape of the pin right there. I wanted the shooting star, Martha told me it was too expensive. So in the circle shape, it would say essential two and then M V R S D. So sort of the, we acknowledge teachers as essential staff, um, with a couple little stars separating the words from M V R S D. Um, so that is one proposal. The second proposal, um, if the board would like to continue on with the typical, uh, tray of vegetables and typically the board sends a cake or some kind of goodies, um, too. So just looking at which direction the board may want to head for, uh, teacher appreciation week, which will be on us before we know it.
Yeah.
Do them both.
Right? I have the.
Pins and food.
Pins and food.
I mean, is that something they like? It has the pin program. Have they enjoyed that? I mean, I, it's a nice to get a little recognition, especially with this year being so weird.
Um, I say every time I see people's lanyards and they always have their pins on them, um, that I will be jealous, you know, maybe it's worth me staying in district for ten years total, so I can get a pin. So I, I would say that people really, um, have appreciated them. They do wear them, you know, the lanyards are a perfect place. Uh, I see a lot of the blue ribbon school pins from Canaan. People wear the, their years of service pins very proudly, very, very proudly.
Good.
I think that is a nice, um, would be a nice gesture by the board.
Kimberly, did you?
Can we do both? I'm serious.
Is that essential contractual?
I think so.
I've been the board minutes.
Fine, I've been the meeting.
So the pins and the cake and the veg, yeah, yeah, we're gonna do both. I, that's what Tim is proposing.
Deb says we can afford it.
Okay.
There's money in the school board line.
All right.
All right.
Okay, so this will be with cake and and veggies, right?
Yeah.
Why not, right?
That's a balance meal, right?
Right?
Veggies with the pants, yeah.
Okay. And another appreciate, so I'll adjutate a motion for the pins to be ordered and to uh get the veggie platter and the cake for the uh stuff. So move. Second, Kathleen Stacy. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing that, Kim Josephson.
Aye.
Strike now.
Aye.
You describe?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy.
I.
Danielle Thompson.
I.
Anchovy Hebert.
I.
And that passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. When is that gonna be?
I don't know, sometime coming up.
Okay.
First week of May.
I appreciate teachers every day.
That's right. It's so hard to just narrow it down to one week.
For me to just have a week. It's not, right?
Okay, so next in our packet, uh, we have the approval of the Burn Foundation grant five thousand dollars for the Title One Math Warding. Have a motion, have we discussed?
I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the uh acceptance of the Burn Foundation uh grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. With very much thanks.
Second, Danielle, thank you. Is this a repetitive program we've had before?
Yeah, Nancy and Susan Mello, the Title One Coordinator, um, did that, pulled that together last year for the elementary school. And I guess it was. Should be well received, my understanding, so, so they asked again to do it this year.
Nice, very good. Anyone else have any comment or question?
It's a worthwhile program.
Kids enjoy that. Okay, roll call vote, Tim Josephson.
Aye.
Let's drag now.
Aye.
You describe?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy.
I.
Danielle Thompson.
I.
Anchovy Hebert. I, six zero zero, and the motion passes. Thank you again to the Burn Foundation. All right. What everyone's been waiting for. So committees. All right, um. So Candace, just to kind of do a quick overview, um, the multiple subcommittees of the board are listed on this particular sheet. So if there's anything of particular interest, um, you're not obligated to overload yourself. I mean, if you feel more comfortable in like EIC or facilities finance or um anything like that. And if you have any questions along the way, please ask.
Absolutely. Um, I think my vested interest is in curriculum.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with financing facilities and I'll work our way through the sheet here to see how um that'll work. Now, uh, we have been meeting on Wednesdays at one o'clock.
Brewster mentioned he would like to remain on that committee.
Okay. Okay, um. Anyone else on that committee?
I can do that if if we need to. My afternoon, I'm I'm free on Wednesday afternoons.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind remaining on it either.
Okay, if you want to remain on it, hope, that's totally fine. I was just.
Are you sure?
Yeah, 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 totally.
Okay, so Hope, Brewster. Uh, Hope, do you want to be the budget committee rep again, or the alternate?
I mean, I guess I would prefer the alternate, but um what if, you know, it'd be. I would prefer the alternate.
Okay. Um, I'd like to stay on that committee. I've been on it for seventeen years, so um if that's okay with you, Jim.
Yeah, you wanna you wanna do the board, uh, the budget committee rep?
Sure.
Absolutely, go for it.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna see him then.
I'll miss it too.
All right, the next up will be the EIC Educational Issues Committee.
I would like to, I would like to do EIC again this year.
We get Tim.
That sounded like Candace was.
Candace is looking for the.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. It's good to be here because we are famous of putting people on committees that they don't really like. They're all very important. So I need one more for.
I'll be the third.
Kathleen.
All right.
And who's gonna be the Hartford rep and the school board delegate?
I'll do school board delegate again.
Okay.
Now, what's Hartford rep? Um, what's that involve?
Uh, you're part of the Regional Advisory Board for Hartford. We meet quarterly. Um, and just, you know, we go to the Hartford program. Um, it is an in-person meeting. Um, well, it's, we've had a couple of Zoom meetings, but it will go back to in-person this spring. Um, it's it's business of a board, just like here. Uh, you know.
Don't they feed you?
No, they don't. So don't make promises.
They used to feed lunch.
Yeah, no, no, I, I don't get lunch.
They have a culinary program there. Why aren't they making lunch?
The business hours of the day.
It's typically at ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, any specific day?
Uh, it feels like Tuesdays.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Tuesdays are gonna be tough. Depend, it's it's quarterly, so it's just. I can juggle that. I'll do that.
Okay.
If there's, if there's one you can't make, Kathleen, I'm happy to subs for you on a day, if if you know in advance.
Hartford, uh, Votech, uh, the handicapped students would come down to the vet center. And they would serve lunch to the veterans and hang out. Uh, the, I had a band group, a music group therapy. Going on at the same time coordinating and all that, and they just loved it. Of course, they all learned to sing all the cowboy songs that the band would play for them. And then COVID came, and then the the best part about COVID was I didn't have to say goodbye to the kids.
Yeah.
We get really attached to them.
Sure do, sure do. All right, well, thank you, Kathleen, for that. Um, I think you'll enjoy seeing what goes on over there. It's really something.
Yes, it's a special place. It really is.
Yeah.
Keep telling people you have to go check it out.
Yeah. Negotiation, the personnel, we do have contracts.
I'll do it again.
Negotiations.
Hmm, I wouldn't mind trying it.
And I want to try it.
Uh. Usually by default, we have the chair of the board as as one of the members, um, as kind of a leadership thing. Yeah, one, two, three, four. Now you only have four, two spots, right?
Yeah.
So who's on the negotiation time?
Well, I am.
Kathleen and Hope, with you?
Tim wanted to. Kathy mentioned interests.
Well, you can't have four, because then you have a forum.
Right.
Can't do that. And I don't think, honestly, I don't think, um, after the last negotiation, that we'd have to change members.
Yes. So, and uh, Hope, was there any other committees that you were more interested in than others?
Um, no.
Oh, you're beautiful.
Cross that off. The negotiations. Cross that off.
Cross your your name off?
Wait, so what you're saying, I'm not, so don't put me down on negotiation is I didn't, I missed that, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to figure out if was there other committee.
Oh, but am I on the negotiations or not? No?
But we're still kind of rattling that around because you, yourself, and Kathleen that want to be on it. So I have to, there's gonna be two out of the three. So I'm just trying to make. So everyone has got what they want, but yet.
Right.
Load anyone either.
Yep. Um, I mean, one of them I'm I'm interested a little bit in is the wellness committee, but I know that Danielle, that's kind of her baby. So, um, I don't really, you know, I'm fine. I'm flexible here.
We do have negotiations next year too, so.
Yes.
I mean, I I can, yeah, it it doesn't matter. I I did it last year, so I I think so. I don't, I'm not trying to be butt in, but I'm I'm just, it's good for continuity. Uh, but I am I'm open to whatever, whatever people want.
Uh, good point. Yeah, so uh, Tim, it was between Hope and Kathleen, whoever would like to do it.
Kathleen, I think you have uh seniority here, so you go for it.
Okay, I'll take my seniority.
All right, so it's myself, Tim, and Kathleen on negotiations. Right, uh, Joint Loss Management Committee, which is a quarterly meeting, usually on a early release day. Was it one o'clock, two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Yep.
Um, we have that committee. We also have Professional Development Committee. Candace, you can jump in here anytime, whatever you'd like. Don't be afraid. We won't. We'll yell.
Um, I I would suggest Brewster for the Joint Loss Committee.
Yeah.
He did that this year, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's like a fifteen, twenty minute meeting typically.
Right. With him in the room, yes.
Move it right through. Move it right through.
Move it right along.
Um. I did have a couple of questions on the co-curricular, so, but Professional Development Committee rep. That's after school meeting on Thursday.
It's usually like three thirty to four thirty.
Yeah. Want interested in that? Candace, would you like to try that? It'll get you involved with some of the teachers and.
Which day is that one on?
On Thursday, Thursday at three fifteen.
I wouldn't be able to do that early.
Okay. Hope is the current member. Oh, Hope.
How has it been?
Um. Yeah, I I was surprised that, I thought the newsletter would have been in this packet. Um, it's good, they're they're looking at getting a platform.
Oh, good.
For uh, and using um something similar to the one they're using for the substitutes, I believe. So that's what they've been discussing and um. Yeah, so I'm on, um, I'm getting loaded up here, one, two, three. You know.
I can, I can do professional development. Cause this, is it quarterly or monthly? I forget.
It's every. No, it's 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 monthly.
It's monthly, okay.
It's not long.
No, it's like a half an hour, it's like forty-five minutes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, Tim, one, two, three, four.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to help out.
Okay. Our Communications Committee.
Yeah.
Danielle. Candace, Hope. Communications. That's every other month.
I've done that for years, but if anyone else, go ahead for it, go for it.
Um, should we?
Not my strong suit is the website. It is, I mean, I would, but I don't know what I would, you know. You know, if it's mostly about the website and that kind of thing.
Not really. I mean, it's the newsletter that goes out.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's been handled mostly in in uh in the SAU office, right? Um. Right, so we've more been linking it to some of the communication goals in the strategic plan.
Okay.
For example, I mean, we've talked about that sort of stuff, budget communication.
Yeah, uh, well, I I'd be happy to if that helps.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do we have to have three on a committee, or could it just be two?
Could just be two.
That's what I thought.
I'll I'll do communications again. That's fine.
Tim, was that five?
Well, one of them's the delegate rep, and that meets once a year, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't count.
And the Wellness Committee rep is you, Danielle, sure. So that leaves us with co-curricular. And the reason why I waited for the last of that was because. I don't think it's conducive to have it as a night meeting. It needs to be more of an after-school meeting, so then we can invite, you know, the athletes and coaches and not have to reach back back at night, you know, for meetings. Um, and I don't know how well that will work for anyone that wants to be on it, so.
I have had requests from the athletic director to, and the principal here at the building, because they do require my administrators to take part in this. To ask if it could be earlier in the day, so I would say that um that would be true, Cookie.
Right, okay, so that's in every other month. Uh, I would probably say three thirty.
Now, can I ask, is this one, is this a committee that um in the every other month model makes sense? Um, or is it something that uh that would work similar to the quarterly model that the Wellness Committee is in? Um, where it's, um, and it doesn't even, it's not, it's a subcommittee of the board, but it has m- membership that is more inclusive of the practitioners. And. So I'm just putting it out there.
No, I think.
I agree.
I mean, the the Wellness Committee to me is a very inclusive, we have a parent now that wants to be part of it. Um, it's a very nice inclusive meeting. I get a lot more um input and buy-in from the teachers and such. So I I would be a very big fan of doing that. I think you'd get kids that would participate. I think you would get um teachers that would participate, coaches, co-curricular advisors. I think the ability to have someone come in from IRS or the high school at three fifteen would be great.
All right, seeing, reading on that piece, uh, who would like to do?
I wouldn't mind continuing on it.
Okay.
Are you look, so I have a question. Is the co-curricular activity, is it just a subcommittee of the board, or is it, does it, it, can it, can we look at it this year and say? Maybe we want to reimagine it like the Wellness Committee, where you have, you know, students and staff and things like that with a voting. Uh, you know, to to organize it and stuff like that, um, just because of the scope of it is more similar to a wellness than to uh EIC or something like that. I'm just curious if that's how many people we want to have, if if we want to start with three and then think about it, I don't know. You see what, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And you can still handle, I mean, you can still discuss and get feedback around policy and that sort of thing, because that's how it happened within Wellness Committee. Actually, the wellness policy is is a, is one that is, uh, comes around a regular basis, so I can still get some of that stuff done.
Okay. Oh, do I have any other candidates in the title? If you want.
Go ahead.
I can do that. I don't have very many other assignments. All right, well, we'll leave it at these two for now, and we'll see. Unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to, I'd like to do it, because I've. Kind of, I'd like to be a little bit more involved with the co-curricular, but um, we driving children.
Your own.
I got my own.
Yeah, that's your own after-school program, Cookie.
Right, right? That's right. I love the overhead mic, let me tell you. Okay, so I think we firmed up pretty much everything. Um. Okay.
Yeah, all right.
That wasn't too bad. Um, for discussion in regards to the time meeting, six o'clock meeting time. I, I, I think it's always been pretty, pretty easy to, you know, accommodate everyone at six o'clock, so. I can't see starting later, that's too much.
Yeah. Hey, I agree. I, I agree. I think six is fine. Um, I think when we put up the full calendar for, uh, the whole year and everything, I think the one change we should make is what I had alluded to last meeting is to have this organizational meeting like the Tuesday after the election. So like double up our meeting, you know, do a short period of time and just so we can organize and get this stuff out of the way and then do business the following, if that's, if that's something people want to do. But we can talk about that when we set dates for all the meetings.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Tim. Okay, so. Next up is the directory update. Just go back and make sure it is correct.
So Cookie, I'll just jump in. There are two pages here.
Yes.
Um, there had been a request from the board a couple of years ago to keep personal information out, and that's what we do. So the one that has everyone's, um, address and home phone number, those are not available to the public. They are right to know information wise. So we do need to have that verified at the SAU. Uh, the second page that you'll see is just, um, your MVRSD, your name with your MVRSD email. That is what we put publicly on the website. The other one is just in case we have a right to know, um, request that would have us provide that. So I would like confirmation in email form from people, um, just so that we know Martha can be assured that this information is correct.
All right. So when Marah's lost it tomorrow, we're gonna hear you. Or tonight. So when she feels welcome, when she gets in.
That's right.
Right. And the school board forum, I'm sorry, Martha, will not be taking place tonight.
Um, no, but we have decided that we would like everyone to submit their own. We're going to do a, like a class photo, like a yearbook style class photo, and that will also, so the photo of your choice.
So the one on my license from like meetings?
Sure, that would be great. We should take whatever.
Our high school graduation photo.
Yes.
I like that Kathleen, do your graduation photo with it.
Oh, I wish we see if anybody notices the difference.
We're also going to use this on the website to go beside your name in the directory. So we're going to have pictures there. So, yep. We thought COVID style, we will do a, Martha will put together a little yearbook style montage.
That sounds good. Reimagine. Good. Uh, approval of the minutes.
Wow. Already.
I'll make, we approve the minutes, uh, public and non-public of, uh, February twenty third, twenty twenty one.
A second. Stacy for the second. Okay, discussion.
You look fabulous as always, Kamala. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, well, Tim Josephson.
Aye.
It's right now.
Aye.
It is Friday.
Aye.
You have to abstain. Candace.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Aye. I'm having issues with my internet. I apologize.
But no, you're fine. Um, so basically because you were present, um, and officially on the board, she will have to abstain for this vote.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Kathleen Stacy.
Aye.
Danielle Thompson.
Aye.
And Cookie Bieber.
Aye.
So we have five to the affirmative and one abstention, which is. Student representative report. Is she still with it? She is not still.
She is. She's.
Do not. I have been here the whole time.
This is the longest. Been in a meeting. We're making you work here for your, make you earn your keep here.
Yeah. You know, I had my dinner, you know, I'm still here. I'm listening to all your different committees. I don't know if half of them are, but you know.
Actually, that brings up a good point. The student board rep should be on the co-curricular active, uh, committee.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Hey, where's that other student that you said you were gonna get?
Well, don't we have an alternate?
Yeah.
I don't know. No one ever tells me this stuff.
Okay, go ahead.
So wait, when does that meeting meet?
Well, they changed to, to three fifteen, right?
Yeah, it'll be after school sometime, right? After school sometime.
How often?
Quarterly.
Like four times a year.
Don't worry, you're gonna be graduating.
Yeah, I could be graduating.
You can't do that.
There are ones who'll be lucky. And it might be a day that you have track, so.
Yeah, I was about to say, I might have.
Your alternate might have to do it.
Yeah, your alternate.
I don't, my alternate, I don't think would, he would be, uh, in over his head.
No.
That's a tra, that's a training issue.
Fine.
I don't think he knows that he's one.
Oh.
I don't think.
All right. Even Mr. Fitzgerald could work out.
Yeah. I don't know. Um, so. Not a whole lot, I guess, from my point. I've been at home for the past, what was it, mom? Eight days?
Yeah.
Eight days? I've been quarantining because I was exposed and so haven't done a whole lot. It's been, the teachers are good about getting their Google Meet up. Um, I would kind of think that no one's reached out to me. Like, no, like my guidance counselor hasn't, like, no, like, anyone has, like, reached out to me. My teachers haven't reached out to me. Like, no one's done anything about it. And that's like, like you're disconnecting from everything except for that seventy-three minutes that you're there.
Yeah.
Cause you, I only have two classes that are online. So I'm there from nine fifteen until ten thirty-one. And then for two hours, I don't have anything. So it's kind of like, you like lose the kind of like connection of like going on. And it can be hard, like being home and being a teenager and having to stay. Luckily, it's getting nice out, so we can go outside. But when you can't do anything or go anywhere, it's, it gets a little draining. And so to have like, maybe like your guidance counselor or like a teacher or someone to like reach out, that might be helpful. Yeah, I don't know. It's, we had project grad, we had our dinner, the mac and cheese and pulled pork. I think that did pretty well. Yeah, Danielle?
Yes, it did. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you know, that was my last hurrah, I guess. Haven't done anything since. Um, but I know track, they canceled last week's, uh, optional training because there was two of them that were positive that were on like there. But then I think softball and baseball are doing well. Um. I feel like we had, uh, winter carnival. Kind of, it was like Mascoma Madness kind of thing where we had in the gym, we had an obstacle course and we had shoot on fits where it was like, I think it was like, it was a fundraiser. It was like two bucks or something. I don't know. And he like got all suited up. Um, so I heard that it was very exciting and fun. There was also, um, stuff for like individual like events. So we had like floral arrangement, cake decorating, zen coloring, um, pandemic poems. We had like all different things, like for students to kind of do it as well, but in like a COVID safe. And the remote students would just like submit like through a photo and we made it like super inclusive. So I think that was a hit and we had spirit days and we had our penny wars. So that's always exciting. Uh, I have not heard about the results. Who won?
I think seniors did.
Yeah. Um, so that's exciting. Um, no, but I think March is always a hard month because it's a lot of school and there's like, like for most of the months, you have like holidays and stuff like that, but March is like, meh. So, I don't know. I think we're, we're holding up. Yeah, we're getting excited because it's nice out. Um, I know that gym class has been outside a bunch. I saw that, um, they brought like their like badminton, the little like.
I saw that in the parking lot.
Yeah, they had it in the parking lot and the gym class was outside. They put the, like the nets up in the parking lot. And so that way they could play outside and still be able to do like gym class. So that's definitely been good. Um. Yeah, graduation is nearing. So that's super stressful for a lot of us trying to figure out what people are doing next year. Um. Yeah, I feel like we're hoping for a prom. I feel like that would definitely be exciting. I feel like anything that's like spirited in high school, like yay, I feel like anything would be fine. Like we'll take what we can get. So. I feel like we're, we're doing what we can. I've never seen a group of teenagers be so committed to like making sure that they do everything for sports and like everything for class, just so that way they can show up and see their friends. Like, I feel like that is definitely, that's definitely like impacted us. And like, if we want it to happen, we have to be the change. So I think that'll be good for like character, like building your character. So that'll definitely be a good thing later on. Silver lining. Yeah. So I think that's pretty much it. Anyone have any questions or anything? It's nice to meet you, Candace. I don't know who you are, but nice to meet you. I'm Isabel.
Nice to meet you as well.
Um, yeah, so that's basically, basically what's going on in school.
Thanks for hanging in there, Isabel.
Yeah.
Of course.
It's, it's not easy. My, as you know, my daughter does remote, so I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Of course. Well, I hope everyone has a great meeting and that way your meeting doesn't go too late. Cause.
I don't know. It, it's already passed that point. You had supper.
You had supper.
I did. I love eating. Yeah, my dad brought it to me.
Well, you have a good night and.
Thanks. You too. Bye.
Night. EIC meeting minutes from February twenty fifth of twenty twenty. And who? Kathleen, is that you?
No, it was Bridget.
Oh.
Yeah, trying to just pull it up here. Do, 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 trying to remember what we talked about. Oh, that's right. Mr. Jarvis shared his Bitmoji classroom. That was really awesome. He took us through a virtual tour of his classroom where like he create, recreated like he, kids could interact with art and stuff. That was very cool. Um, we did an SEL update with some of the school counselors uh, at the elementary and middle schools. And then we talked to two different teachers at the high school. Um, just talking about the social emotional learning and, and it does really reflect, um, it echoes what Isabel said. Um, you know, in, in that in this weird year, uh, I think reaching out to high school kids is really what's needed. So, um, I, I am a little sad to hear that she hasn't had anyone reach out to her, uh, because that is something we talked about at EIC. So I hope we can, we can turn that around. Um, but that's just an important part and, and that, that's I Kathleen, did I anything? Did I miss anything? That, because that was most of what we talked about, I guess.
Yep. Yeah. Um. I was just looking over the minutes.
It seems like forever ago.
It does. It seems like a long time ago.
If you look in the minutes, you can see Mr. Jarvis's, uh, Bitmoji classroom and why we were so jealous of it. And, uh, it, it's just so much fun. And he said the kids are really, uh, taken to it to interact with it and stuff. So.
Yeah, it was, it's pretty amazing. We, we thought it would be great to share it at one of this board meetings. So. Nice.
Yeah. Oh, they talked, uh, they talked about the choose love program and how it's a little more, uh, it's a little more helpful at the younger grades, not as much at the older grades. So they are looking at different, Nancy was looking at different, um, you know, other programs that they could get into later on. Um, you know, so the new curriculum coordinator will probably take, pick up that baton and, and run with that. So. But, yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Sana, thank you. Tim and Kathleen.
Wellness Committee, I think that would be. Um, so you've got the minutes, Jeff, minutes in your packet. Um. We talked a bit about diabetes. Just remind, looking at the minutes reminds me that I said that I would send out some links to it. So I will do that tomorrow. Um, essentially, uh, not that the incidence of type one diabetes in children has increased, but the, the severity of disease when, uh, when presented has increased because people haven't necessarily been, been, uh, been going to well child visits during, during the pandemic. So, um, and without, without having the watchful eyes of um, teachers and school nurses, um, in the school setting, sometimes as in, in families, you can, you can miss out on some of those signs because you're just with them all the time. So anyway, so that's something that we'll, we'll continue to look at. Um. And make sure that parents have resources. Um, we'll be continuing our conversations about lead poisoning and, um, educate, community education, family education opportunities with the Public Health Network. Um, we got an update about the food pantry usage. Um, and again, reminded that over sixty boxes um, throughout the district were provided, um, over the most recent break. I'm sure that that's probably going to be very similar at April vacation time. Um, we had a food service update, um, doing, doing well as far as numbers, um, of meals being provided in our schools. And we also had Andrea from the Altogether Network, uh, mentioned that, um, she is happy to help us with prevention needs. We did have a question about, this is before the, the staff vaccinations were set up. So there, there were some, uh, there was some discussion about staff vaccinations and, um, and any changes that might, uh, need to take place on either the on the screening tool that's, that's used or, um, in relation to quarantine requirements. Um, and I don't know where we, I think we were going to check with the, was it the insurance company?
On the products.
Yes, um, to decide what needed to be changed on that. So the administration is handling that. All right. And our next meeting will be on May twenty seventh.
I think there might just be a misspelling. It's Andrea Smith that was there. There's no Angela, right?
Correct. Yes.
So the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Sana, thank you, Danielle. Finance and facilities. Okay, we met on March third and Corrado had given a report in regards to, um, switching from hurling energy to lime green for maintenance of the pellet boilers. Continue or reaching for maintenance or repairs of the heating plant is needed. Uh, he's starting his projects for the April break and the end of the school term projects as well. Putting together preliminary summer schedule. There was a discussion in regards to the lease ban that we had. Um, that lease van was leased by RSD and, uh, we turned it in. Um, it was not inspectable and they did not want to stand behind it. So we turned it in. Um. Uh, Corrado is also looking to turn in or trade in, uh, the Kia that we have, the SUV. Uh, Roger used that quite a bit. Um, and he's looking for a more, a newer and more efficient vehicle. Um, he did mention something in the lines of a pickup or something of that nature. So, uh, when that comes, uh, through, obviously we'll, we'll see it. Um. Yeah. He says, looking with the hope at the end of the winter season, so we can move on to the exterior grounds and associated projects like road repairs, et cetera, before graduation. So. Uh, let's see, finance audit. Um, our third person, Sue, is preparing the letters for the audit and Deb is getting capital assets in the audit folder before she, she's going to be gone. Uh, there's about six hundred and forty thousand unspent. Uh, there's about six hundred and forty thousand unspent in this bed budget and one point two million in the general fund, so the budget is in really good shape. Working on the end of year projects uh that will be coming to us. Uh, and then should be firming up the end of the year money. She will bring the list to the board as soon as she has it prior to year end. Next year's budget is going to be extremely tight, which we know um working on CIP. We will ask for some of those summer projects. And I had asked if Deb would come on board. Um, when I asked when the new business administrator would come on board and Deborah spun July one in that she had met with him for an hour and a half. This is the week prior to a meeting and he would be up to speed for a smooth transfer. I know Deb will be right around the corner. Cafe services, um, and I'm definitely and has been meeting with them in regards to the loss that they were claiming in January of the eight thousand dollars. Um, and I know a lot of food food has been going through the building, so I'm hoping that's going to be made up.
I do have a lot of updates, so I'm not sure how much you want to read because I'm going to contradict everything.
Good, and I'm just gonna skip right over that. There was a discussion about Butler bus and trying to do more advertising. Um, as you notice, a bus down there with a banner on it, so that's been there for a couple of weeks now. They are also getting us T-shirts because we're like walking walking billboards, so. Free advertising. Free advertising, right? So, um, so we're trying, you know, uh, we're, yeah, it's 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 spring, that's all I'm saying.
I have a question real quick that that just made me think. Are school buses able to advertise on themselves that they're hiring drivers like when you're out driving? That might be something to look into. I I I don't think so. I'm sure there's an RSA that says it has to be only yellow and you can't have anything else on it, but it would be worth looking. I'm just trying.
Really like that, appreciating the banner as you go down the road.
I love it, yeah. I just something to look into, that's all. Butler would know, I'm sure, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
I don't think you can either, but it's worth a shot.
Sure.
Just have them yell out the window when they're waiting in traffic. Hey, want to do this?
Uh, we had a loss in the driver's head because of COVID, obviously. Um, because they're in good shape, so um that's good. Manifest have been fine, good with signing up the date, so I gotta get in there this week. Now that we got everything figured out, so. And next meeting is going to be, well, scheduled to be April. What did I say that was the? April, but it's an early release day. So we'll have to change it. Okay, so I'll just send him off an email in the morning and see what we can do. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, um. This is a very self-interested question. So will there be an additional um round, like are we trying to squeeze in an extra drivers at class over the over this next little bit?
Well, we're looking right now to see if um if they've listed lifted the one student per car with the three feet um change, so we're looking. They did, so we did look into that. So, yeah, we can go back to two students and a car and that will help.
Oh, that'll help.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So we but we will start another. We just started one, but we will start another one before this fiscal year ends, which will go towards this year.
Another one coming through?
Yes, the last one, turn sixteen at the end of June. Yes. And he would like his license like the day after.
Right.
I was like, I gotta get you into driver's ed first here, buddy.
Okay, any other questions for finance and facilities? Co-curricular activities subcommittee? Who's going to be speaking?
I'll do I'll do that. Well, Bridget would normally be doing that, right? So we had a presentation of the drama and the music. Um, and it was really very interesting. Um, and uh they have done a movie and they're almost complete. And I guess it says twenty kids participated, so they were seemed pretty excited about that and there was a lot of creative things happening. Um, the musical they got talked about um that they were having difficulty with the funding and the copyright issues. Um, and that they once again, you know, became you know, did something very creative um and um uh created their own story and their original music, um which I believe Amy Morse wrote the music to the songs. Um, and they were seemed very pleased that, you know, everybody's being flexible and and creating things. The other thing that was mentioned that I thought was very interesting was that um because we were not hiring out um the costumes and the, you know, what and I, you know, all the typical things that we would normally hire out to do, the kids were doing it. Um, and that there was a lot more opportunities for kids to do things. Um, and you know, but the behind the scenes kind of thing, and that was seemed to be working very well. So um I think that was sort of one of those pleasant surprises for them and and it makes a lot of sense. Um, there was discussion about the um questionnaire that we've been working on in terms of getting a sense of uh, you know, uh, who's doing what and how many kids are participating. There was not much um response. Um, so I believe that was uh kicked back to Rodney who was going to maybe have people. The goal was to hopefully get the responses in by the end of the year. And um we went we went over the 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 sports update, uh, which we just did here, so. Um, and then hopefully we'll be looking at uh middle school uh steam workshop uh and reviewing the questionnaire results. And there was some talk, I believe, bantering about um about the uh possibilities of the co-curricular um activities at specifically at IRS, so. Was it?
Thanks. So, any questions? Sana. We'll move on to the superintendent's.
Just can I say for a second, I like that thought about the um this committee being more um into the wellness committee format and getting other people involved. I think that's what we're really trying after here is to get more input from everybody, so that's it's a good thought.
Thank you. Okay, we're done.
Uh, so you do have my written pack uh report in the packet. Um, just a welcome to Candace Fry. Um, thank you for joining the team here. We appreciate your hard work and volunteerism. Um, and then I talk a little bit about uh, you know, the fact that the governor had has mandated that schools come back and yet we still, we've already had that model. We just continue to move on with it. Um, I think we'll get some good feedback. I think it was a nice, robust discussion today about the high school and what the high school looks like and what it could potentially look like for the remainder of our year for our kids. Very powerful to me to hear like Isabel say, even if it's twelve extra days, still twelve extra days she gets to see other kids. So I thought that was a pretty powerful statement. Um, we're hoping to begin our after-school tutoring program. That's an extension of what we did over February break uh with some tutors. I've asked uh Nancy Murphy, the curriculum coordinator, to start that immediately. Um, so we'll be that will be started. She's also making determinations on what, April? Uh, the April tutoring vacation, April vacation tutoring program will look like. There it is. Um, and then looking at a summer race program that would probably involve some STEM-based activities for some of our kids. So um I'll have more information on that in the upcoming meetings. Um, so, yeah, we're really hoping that these tutoring opportunities will close some gaps for our kids. Um, I'd also like to thank the town of Canaan, Canaan Fire Department, the Mascoma Health Center for a really wonderful vaccination clinic for our staff that happened on Saturday. I think it was just wonderful. We had so many volunteers from the SAU office that was right there checking everyone in. Our school nurses were giving shots. Martha McDonald, Danielle Pushy were checking people in. Um, there were people from the health center working. There were EMTs giving shots. It was just a great day and we moved, you know, over two hundred people uh of our own faculty and staff and some community members. We were able to help also with community members, so that was a really great um piece of collaboration between the town of Canaan and the school district.
Any questions for Amanda?
Yeah, I I want to reiterate what what I've mentioned that, you know, I think that being able to offer to our um to our coaches who work directly with with our students was was a great benefit um for them, so I wanted to again uh thank the district for offering that opportunity. Um, and do we have a sense of of what percentage of of staff took advantage of the of the vaccines that were available?
So I would say we're probably close to seventy-five percent that took advantage of that. You know, we run about thirty fifty, maybe, you know, seventy-five-ish, Deb, what do you think?
Yeah.
Don't do the numbers real quick.
Less less than, um, I mean, we have a lot. We typically have a lot of substitutes. We just don't really this year, so our numbers are down a little bit. And we have, you know, quite a few people that were already backed.
Right, yes.
Were included.
So we'll have quite a good, you know, when it's all said and done, I think we'll have quite a good representation that have chosen to become vaccinated.
I would think ninety percent.
I think Deb's probably not wrong.
That's great.
Yeah, if if we can get a final number after uh at the end of this, that would be really good.
Yeah, probably we can. People are doing it on their own, too. If they couldn't come Saturday, they've already registered because we're in two A, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
That's better than what I thought, so.
That's awesome, though.
Yeah, that's very good. All right, anything else for Amanda?
So uh the financials for February are in your packet and um what Cookie reported in finance and facilities is about where we are still, so we're in good shape. Um, and thinking about the um the new vehicle that maintenance would need, um, we really are looking at a truck and and thinking about the vehicles that we have. It makes more sense to trade in the Sonata, the little maroon car that's older and keep the Kia.
Oh, okay.
That was um, that came up in a discussion I was having today that we should do that instead. Um, cafe services, uh, I took the February report. Um, so we had a really good February um where we made five thousand dollars, so the loss with food service is less than eighteen hundred right now, so we'll be we'll be good with food service um to the end of the year. And we are, we did start sending out meals on Fridays for weekend meals out of each of the schools. So um as the weeks go by, um, I know each two of the schools have increased since what they the first number that they put out the first Friday. So we're just saying, you know, everybody can eat free. We also found out that we will still be able to do free meals through the end of September, so that will be part of the summer program. Um, it may look similar to last year's. Um, we may use buses again. When we get a little closer, we'll figure that out. Um, where we are. Um, drivers add, yeah, they still, it's not as bad of a loss. We're down from ten thousand to seven thousand with this new class, but I do think the um the general fund is going to have to subsidize some of that because I can't have a negative fund balance at year end, so there will be some expense coming out of that. Um, I think that was all I had. I did want to tell you about the meals. Um, I listened today to the state um DOE talk about SR two funds, which is um the nine hundred and seventeen thousand that you previously approved. They finally allocated that last week after a lot of pressure from a lot of superintendents in the state. Um, so there are a lot of uses for that. Um, I'm really looking at air exchange, at least, if not HVAC systems for the elementary schools. Um, they also said we can do insulation, so insulation.
Dan.
Dan? Dan, please have your services. You know, it's a long meeting when we.
But we can also do insulation, so I'll make sure that Canaan Elementary School is completely insulated because that's important for air quality, too. Um, you can also all those summer tutoring, all the other tutoring, any any um any learning loss, we can address with those funds as well. So it's pretty broad use of those funds. And then I know um with the the package that was just approved, the one point nine million, the state in New Hampshire is getting three hundred and fifty million, so we'll receive three times that nine hundred and seventeen thousand from that fund, so we'll be able to um address a lot of learning loss and, you know, other. But there it's there's a lot of parameters. If you can, if you can relate it to COVID, you can spend that money on it.
Wow.
So that's the good news.
Great. Daniel. Isabel's comment and also something else I was reading got me to thinking, will there be an opportunity for us to maybe consider using some of these additional funds to help support uh social emotional health, whether that's through social workers or additional guidance or other counseling certain counseling staff or increasing the amount of um wraparound services that are provided.
Yeah, providing mental health services and supports. I mean, it's all in here, anything that you can relate to COVID. And, yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, with with that third round, the SR three.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna have to do some of that.
It will it will look like people in positions.
Yeah.
You know, other school districts have already done that. We've more focused on facilities. We're focused on um technology, but with this third round, it will allow us to hire in some people. Um, right now, I can tell you the contracted contracted service of West Central coming in here is is full.
Yeah.
Is full, like even in the time of COVID where we don't have the full full classrooms, we are full. That counseling service is over full, so expanding that and doing anything else we can to help our kids is it will be the priority.
Great. I that's that's really encouraging. I think that will be beneficial to our our kids and our families. Um, you know, and even even thinking about um the opportunity of um athletic trainer, you know, we've gone this year without an athletic trainer and a lot of those and a lot of that stuff has fallen on the administrators and the coaches to do, but in a lot of other schools, they're using athletic trainers to do a lot of the COVID precaution stuff and keeping kids healthy. You know, and um even though we've we've had a part-time position in there, is there a way to think about how we how you know, how we structure that kind of that kind of program as some other schools have done to be able to actually um get a quality candidate in here that can, um, you know, that that can fill the needs that we have.
I do have some potentially good news on that front. I did sign a contract with some state.
Great.
Or if they have somebody.
Yeah.
We will get them.
Okay.
Yeah, so Rodney is right on top of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we jumped on that and said, yes, if you have somebody in your program that is willing to do that, we will take them.
Yeah, that's great, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for the next meeting? Survey results? High school.
Yep. High school decision. Um, I just want to say real quick, the one week that we don't put educational funding in New Hampshire on our agenda, I have two different updates. They're both quick, but one is real one is real quick. Uh, I attended last week. Um, public school funding, uh, it's a conversation on public school funding in New Hampshire. I attended it last week virtually online. There is one more session is being put on by the UNH, uh, New Hampshire Listens. They are the group that is contracted that contracts with the state. When the legislature tells them, go research this thing, like they did all the research on the school funding for the past year that that uh they put the commission together, they or they like they ran it and they they got all the data collection, so now they're just doing listening sessions with community members. Um, it was really, really uh interesting. It was really good. Um, I actually was in a small group with uh Jim Fen from Enfield, who was on our uh reapportionment committee. Uh, he chaired that up a couple of years ago, so that was nice to catch up with him. Um, and so it was just really good. There's another one this Thursday. If people want to attend, just email me. I'll send you the information. Uh, I'll send you hope. And then the other thing is that you may have seen in the news today that the convale lawsuit uh that we are signed on as an amicus brief, uh, as an amicus party to that, uh, that was had a decision from the New Hampshire Supreme Court today. Uh, effectively kicking it back down to Cheshire Superior Court. Um, I I Amanda, you probably had this email to you from uh Natalie Laflambeau. Uh, but she basically summarizes what happened. Long story short, the Supreme Court found that these schools do have standing. They have a they have a case. However, Cheshire Superior Court did not uh should have allowed a full trial with evidence and with. However, Cheshire Superior Court did not, uh, should have allowed a full trial with evidence and with hearings and, and, and all that sort of thing. So it's going back there, uh, for like further stuff. Um, I, Tim Camerato called me today for asking for a quote, I said, they kicked the can down the road and, and let's keep going, I guess this, this is what we do, so. Um, I just wanna give an update on that, so that'll be in the paper tomorrow, um, but that, that's all.
Um, Tim, I'm gonna recommend that, you know, that, that, that one of the emails with the Funding Fairness Project gave a really good breakdown of each of these bills in terms of the impact. And unfortunately, I actually called them, I didn't quite realize, I'm like, well, you don't have Mascoma District on it, and they're like, well, it's town by town and they couldn't consolidate it, but um, it, it's definitely eye-opening in terms of what town will get what and the effect. Um, you know, goes through the current funding, you know, what, what each town's gonna get under the current law. And then each bill, and, um, it's really worth a while taking a look at that. Um, I mean, the, the, um, the numbers, you know, are pretty astounding, um, in terms of the differences. And it's probably, I'm wondering if that's a conversation, I guess that's where I was going with this, is that something that we need to have a conversation about here? Uh, maybe Deb could speak to that a little bit.
Right, I've talked about it, uh, the last eight years. Um, I continue to talk about it when I'm not here any longer because it's, it's so inequitable, but both.
I meant in terms of the budget, in terms of, you know, down the pike, what, how this might look, you know, for us, you know, as, as a district.
Well, frankly, it, it will never pass in New Hampshire, so.
Yeah.
It's not gonna change our budget, it really wouldn't change our budget, it would just make our towns more equitable in what they pay us.
You're muted, oh, oh, you're muted.
Sorry, um, okay, I guess I was thinking it's overall in turn, shortfalls, you know, potential shortfalls, if, but it's fine, never mind.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one. Um, New Hampshire School Board Association and the New Hampshire School Administrators Association also sent out emails, Tim, today, talking about that decision, which was awful.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's okay, it's not a horrible decision, it's just like, uh, we gotta wait longer now, so, okay.
Right.
It's hard.
Yeah.
Yep, hurry up and wait. Sorry, okay, next, next meeting, any agenda items for next meeting?
Right, survey results, high school.
Well, let's leave it at that.
I know, right?
It's nine o'clock.
Yeah.
When will the, uh, sk- high school scheduling?
Oh, yeah.
Um, high school scheduling committee, it had some preliminary, they're finding that they're coming up against the wall in the time limits that they've had.
Yeah.
So they will come and they will talk about, um, what their temporary plan is and then look for what it would be moving forward with really taking a year or half a year, the, you know, the fall and uh, the beginning of next winter to really come up with a solid plan. Um, of what, they, they've really dug into it and they've really, really done a very thorough job, they just can't get there right now.
Yeah.
They just can't, so we could have them come and do a little presentation too next time.
I would love to have an update from them, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to come next time, if there's too many other things, but just thinking, just now, um, timing for the high school students to start selecting classes, I mean, you need to know what kind of schedule you're gonna have in order to take class. Right, so, so the second meeting in April?
You also have YRBS, a YRBS presentation, um, that needs to head.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and so I would suggest, I believe we have that tentatively scheduled for next time, just because handbooks are coming up, quarterly reports will be so shortly after, so.
Yeah, all right.
We're fairly full.
Yeah, okay. We'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, if we can get handbooks like ahead of time, so it's not like, we need this today to go to the printer.
Could I need that?
No.
We have, have a plan to get them to you.
I, I figured you did.
But I'll make sure you get them even earlier than that, so that you can review them before the board meeting.
Not me personally, but the board. Cuz I just remember in years past, like, them being like, uh, uh, I need this passed tonight, so, and we had some issues, so.
Right.
Not that I anticipate any issues.
Right.
Rodney knows who's doing.
All right. All right, do we have any public comments? Oh, Dan, hi!
Just one, cuz I'm gonna circle back to the Finance and Facilities Committee, because you brought in that lunch that day. Did Cafe Services have any response to the, I would say, lack of quantity to the lunch bags and the lack of quality?
Yeah, I, I, I found Anton finally with the bag and gave him that, um, yes, he, he was doing, he was doing a lot of paperwork that week for, um, something that we needed done, and there was a little bit of lack of oversight, but, um, also I think, I mean, I opened the sandwich and I would've eaten it, it was, the sandwich was fine, it's just the quantity is for, as far as the high school, so. Um, I did talk to Chris Gatlin too, so, um, I'm hoping it's been addressed, so they're better now.
Yesterday's lunch was a sandwich, a ham sandwich, a cheese sandwich, with a, a wrap with, uh, chicken barbecue bacon in the sandwich, um, cereal, uh, chew fruits, whether it was an apple or pear, but there was chew fruits. Um, we had, oh, uh, cold sloth and baked beans and, uh, cheese stick. So, it was a substantial difference.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the kids picked the bag up as he was getting off the bus, he was like, oh, I got the twins on this, okay, I'm like, oh, hey! We packed it right up for you today!
Yeah, well, and there was an issue with, um, with the delivery, because of the vacation week, our vacation week is different than their vacation week, so they just didn't send the order of all the produce, so they didn't get anything, so we got apples, and then we have an issue with citrus in this building sometimes, so he didn't think he could have citrus, but he can have citrus, adds a lot to it.
Um, and I think too, Anton was trying to accommodate too many people, he was making a specific meal for the Hartford kids, a specific meal for the remote kids and a specific meal for the kids in the building, so we just said, whatever the, you're making for the remote kids, just pack extra for the Hartford kids, so.
I was, I was gonna say, that's exactly what the remote kids got this week, so, that sounds.
So, good, very good, good, yeah, so, yeah, it, it's a nice change.
Okay, just wanna make sure they were.
Yeah.
Being responsive.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Let's see, do we have any non-public?
Uh, we do for matters of hiring and for the matter of reputation.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we go into non-public in accordance with RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman two B and, is that L?
L, yes.
Thank you.
Second, thank you, Daniel, roll call, Tim Josephson.
Aye.
Good strike now.
Aye.
Amy Spry.
Aye.
Kathleen Stacy.
Aye.
Danielle Thompson.
Aye.
Angel Weaver.
Aye.
We are in non-public. Good night, Dan, thank you. Is Angel gonna hang around?
I don't know.